We'll call the meeting to order. Uh, where is mine?
Pledge.
Uh, first in the blue folder.
First in the blue folder. Blue folder. Lots of paper. Okay, everyone stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Okay, we're gonna work on board planning. Our first program is the annual board self-assessment.
Okay, so, um, just a couple things to get us started. Uh, I brought the copies of the, the norms that you all developed at the last board retreat that was in January, so those are just here since we're having a lot of discussion and dialogue just as a, um, keeping those at the forefront. And then, uh, just in terms of how we've organized the time for you to have time for planning and discussion, we've kinda got it in two... Sorry, I'm just looking because it's like I've made some changes that aren't, uh, saved on this. So can you give me just one second to get into there?
You bet.
Because something's, I'm having a little version of control. Sorry.
We'll keep signing things over here.
Peter and I'll miss.
Poor kids. They deserve to have some better signature signers.
I'm sure that will be the least of their concerns on this.
I know. Still, it's a...
Refuge stamp.
They do have that.
You know, we're gonna forgive you this time. We're gonna forgive you this time. You got one shot at forgiveness.
G-dogs, pick up gear. Cap and gear.
So, uh, that's what we did this week. It was pretty sweet.
Thank you, Ron. Okay. Now, it looks like what I did. Okay. So based on the agenda, we really, uh, organized the time into two parts. The first part is for discussion about the annual board self-assessment. And board members who were here a year ago will remember that, uh, we had a facilitator from WASDA come in and, um, the board at that time had taken the self-assessment and the facilitator walked us through an analysis of the data that led to some goal setting for the board. So we're gonna replicate that, uh, tonight with a couple of caveats which I'll get to in just a moment. Um, so that whole chunk of looking at the board self-assessment, um, leading to some board goal setting for 22, 23, and also talking about, uh, priorities that the board has for the district, um, and then taking a look at a draft of the board calendar for next year because really the board work should drive the board calendar. So once you've had some opportunity to talk about priorities and those kinds of things, then you can take a look at the kinda skeletal version of the board calendar which we'll go through and discuss if you want, you know, to make changes and additions to that. Then the second part, um, will be, uh, for that, uh, critical race theory discussion. And I, I put together some slides on that because it was a presentation, some of the slides are from a presentation that were, it's from August 2021, I believe. Make sure I have that date right. And then I added some, uh, new information and updates as a way to provide some information to lead into the board dialogue. So, uh, with that, uh, we can get right into part one of, of the time tonight. So, um, what this time is for is really twofold. Um, it's time for the board to talk about the work of the board. So, um, that's really the process that Tricia from WASDA led the board through, um, last year at this time. So typically, boards take a self-assessment on an annual basis that's really focused on the board and the board's work. And what the board feels like as a body, uh, you all are, where your strengths are, where there's opportunities for growth, and so forth. So that's what this first part will be about. And, and my hope is that that, through that process, I could help you, um, lead to some priorities. for board governance. So those standards are provide responsible school district governance, set and communicate high expectations for student learning with clear goals and plans for meeting those expectations, create conditions district-wide for student and staff success, hold school district accountable for meeting student learning expectations, and engage local community and represent the values and expectations they hold for their schools. So those are the five big standards. The self-assessment process, um, has the board go through individually, um, basically as a self-assessment, right? It's an online tool that you get from WASTA that we sent out to, to allow you to rate the board as a body on these things. So there's a couple, before we get, go any further, there are a couple little issues, I guess, this year. Um, one, we have one person, I don't know who it is, my intent isn't to call anybody out, but we only had four board members complete the self-assessment. So there's, we do have that, the, the big, um, aggregate data, but, uh, from, input from four people. If you all remember too, this next version, um, that, so there's two reports that we can get from WASTA. One is that aggregate, and then one is a more detailed, um, score ranking. And if, if, I, I brought last year's for you, and all of these things, including the PowerPoint, a printout of it, is in this blue folder. So, um, I have last year's, and you, what you, what you'll recall if you were here and what you'll see if you weren't here, was that it gives a more detailed, um, view of the questions that are associated with each of those standards and where the board scored themselves on those questions. And so you can see where the areas of strength and where the areas of less strength. I've been working with WASTA to get the, the self-assessment right out to you and to get the report back. And I didn't find out until today that, uh, they don't give you that more detailed version unless you have the facilitator come and work with the board. So I've been in contact them, with them since mid-May and, you know, I'll take responsibility for that. It just never came out that, uh, we weren't gonna get both of those reports. I even kinda begged them today, well, can't we just get the second report and we'll figure out how to... But the person who could run the report wasn't there. So we're just, we've got some data tonight. It's not complete data 'cause it doesn't have all the board's input and it doesn't have all the details, but we do have with the aggregate report, you know, some level of, of detail. So we can still do some of this, and then after, you know, we get to what, what we get to tonight, if the board would like to continue, you know, make sure everybody does a self-assessment and then get that more detailed ranking from WASTA, I'm sure we can get it whether we have Tricia come and, and work through this or not. So, okay, all right. So here's, we'll, we'll work with what we do have, and just one, one last thing. This was, um, just for the benefit of, of you, Micah and Gabe, and hopefully you saw the benefit of some of this this year too, I hope. Um, last year, it, through this process, um, the board really reflected on the self-assessment and we had new board members at that time, fairly new board members, who were able to, um, kinda share their experience of being on-boarded and oriented to the board. And so through all of that, really, the board, um, as a body, said, "We wanna focus on, um, orientation of new board members and, you know, really forming a board team." So that led us to work together to kinda plan for what, what exactly are those onboarding activities and meeting with staff and that kinda thing that then we were able to implement when, uh, when Gabe and Micah joined the board. So that was just an example of what this dialogue resulted in last year. Okay? So if you, um, those of you who are here, if you remember, uh, what Tricia led us through was through looking at the self-assessment survey, the board could identify areas of board strength and where areas that you wanna continue to build on that strength, areas for, uh, board growth, opportunities for growth, and also, um, opportunities for the board to increase cohesiveness. And she shared a lot of research at that time, which I didn't include in all of the PowerPoint tonight, but about how, you know, effective boards work together and the more kinda cohesive boards are and the good, and having a good board superintendent relationship will result in higher levels of student achievement. There's a lot of research that shows that high-functioning teams will get those results. So, um, I will take notes probably both on here and then maybe, um, on my computer too, as we go through this process, and then I can share that back with you. Uh, but the first, the first part of the conversation is really looking at those areas of strength. So while we don't have the benefit of the really detailed, we can look at last year's, and you can see in the, this level of self-assessment, and let's just make sure everybody knows what we're looking at. Um, so what they have given us is historically, and I thought this was interesting 'cause I didn't actually know this, um, I guess that the board back in 2011, in 2013, took the self-assessment, and that was before my time. And then there, and then it didn't, for whatever reason, this wasn't a process that the board continued on for many years, and then we started up again last year. So there's some history here and a big gap, of course. Um, and so I don't know how important it is to really look at what the 2011 data showed or the 2013 data showed, but it is here included in, in the packet. So if you, um, turn to page, I guess it's three, they're not numbered here, but the first one that has the color coding on the chart, like it shows the, at the aggregate level for standard one, um, for 2022, twenty-one, there's 21% uh, belief that the board always provides responsible school district governance. Look at my glasses here 'cause it's a little hard to read. Uh, 53% most of the time, 21% some of the time, and then there's a little never and don't know. And so that's an aggregate of all the questions that are tied to this standard one. Does that make sense?
Well, you might get to it, but so then the questions are here that we can go back and reference, right? I know they're from last year, but the question...
Exactly. And so that's what I figured would be better than, better than nothing. You can kinda cross-reference, what are those questions tied to one, um, two, three, four, and five? Exactly. So, so, um, if you reme... When Tricia was here and leading the board through this, there were a lot of small group, you know, pair, share, pair, pair, share kinda discussions, and then she'd get the board back into a big group. I don't know that we necessarily need to do that, but you probably do want a couple of minutes to kinda look through this, um, and, and look for some of those areas of strength. And I think board members can feel free to, you know, talk to your neighbor or whatever if you wanna do it that way. Mike, I don't know if, if there's a particular way you, you wanna, um, go through this, but I think, you know, we can just have individual board members some time to look through it all, and then we can come back and start to just have the dialogue about the patterns and where, where we're seeing the strengths. Okay?
I'll give you some feedback, this is early, but it would be nice if all the standard one questions were together, all the standard two questions, 'cause I'm looking on page three or five, there's standard one, and then there's standard one on, on other pages.
Mm-hmm. So I think there's a, a couple things, um, what, and, and it's a WASTA thing, and I can share that feedback with them. But I think what they do on this one is they, they then rank order them. So all of the ones with green shading are the, are the questions that the board rated highest. And again, this is last year's data.
Very good, okay.
But the questions are, if you look in this big aggregate report, which does have page numbers starting on page four for some reason, it does say like, here's, here are the questions that are tied to standard one. Okay?
Thank you.
Yeah, it is a little scattered. this, remember that you're just looking at the top row. 'Cause I was finding myself looking back and then I'm like, oh no, that was from 2011.
Right. 2013's gonna be a good year.
Oh. Part. Yeah.
How's everyone doing? Close?
Yeah.
You guys ready, Ron?
Okay, so, so really, uh, in terms of reflection and, and looking at strengths, the suggested questions from WASTA are, "Do you see any patterns? Were they clustered mainly within one or two standards?" Uh, and, "Do you see any common themes?" Again, just right now focusing on strengths. And if, uh, if Mike, maybe you wanna call on people and have, for the discussion, I'll take the notes to put up here so we can capture those.
As soon as you guys are looking at standard one, um, so where is it? Benchmark, benchmark. So basically, we're looking, providing responsible school district governance. Okay? Uh, look at these questions, you know, I, I guess when I'm, when I'm going through it, I'm looking where there's the most, uh, division or where there's the, the most differentiation between the various answers. So I went right to, uh, like question eight, where out of the four answers, you had four very different responses. So to me, that means that either we don't understand or there's some confusion about that question or what we're doing to the board. Now, maybe, maybe that's not the direction you guys wanna go, but when I look at it, I'm looking at the, at the, where there's not a great deal of agreement.
And Mike, are, are you seeing the, the, where there's more variation of like not agreement, that that's not a strength?
I, I would say that is not being a strength, I would say that is a weakness.
Because each one is a different one, and nine actually are the same number.
Yeah, say, exactly.
So, four, you can do whatever they want. I would just encourage you to start with the strength.
Start with the positives? All right, start with the positives. Okay. Perfect.
Can I make a...
Absolutely. Jump in.
Comment about, and not in particular, but, um, you know, when you look at things that are always and most of the time, that's such a, we talked about that last year when we had a five-point scale for one of the things that we did. It's really hard because, you know, Micah's, most of the time, mine, mine, the, my always, there's such a fine line sometimes. So if you look at the total of always and most of the time, if we add those together, or kind of a gross approximation, I mean, it's not, you know, specific, but that kinda helps to put those two together. of helps to put those two together sometimes when you're looking at things like this. Because they're not really that specific, and we only have four of the five, so that makes it very difficult. That kind of helps when you're looking at, for example, standard one for this year, seventy-four percent said most of were always. I just think that sometimes helps to look at that when you're talking about strengths.
Well, and especially if you look at question four, obviously, that we're basing our decision on what we feel is best for the students.
Right.
You know, we've got grades, and so obviously, we're all working towards the same goal of what we, you know, we feel is best for the students. Again, we may not agree on everything, but again, we're all trying to do what we feel is best for the, you know, educational success of kids.
I got one.
There we go. Perfect. Positive.
Hey, I have the same one as you, so.
There you go. The other thing, too, is we're following the defined process for gathering inputs and making critical decisions. So again, we're, everyone is obviously feeling that we're, again, may not agree on everything, but we're going through the process. Everyone gets a voice, everyone's speaking, everyone's being heard on that process.
Number seven.
Yes, would anyone disagree? Again, delegating authority to the superintendent.
Give the numbers.
Oh, I'm sorry. Question ten.
Ten and eleven.
Yeah, ten and eleven. Basically says we're giving, you know, Dr. Paris and her staff, letting them do their job and supporting them in that. You got something?
Me, Karen, with the same theme, Mike, go thirteen.
Yeah, thirteen.
So in a way, that's a hundred percent, right? That's a hundred percent score?
Yeah. Yep. Using policy, the line of research, and best practices. So, yes, sir.
Because it's not all one, we would say that's ninety-five instead of giving them a hundred.
Well, yes.
A hundred would be all green.
Right. All or most of the time.
Right. But I guess I'm.
Right. Thank you for having high standards.
No, but you're right. You don't want to say a hundred percent.
It's not a hundred percent, because I think there is one in here that we is one a hundred percent, I thought.
That was one we just.
Yeah.
They were just passing, okay. Okay, I just wanted to point that out.
Thank you.
There's room for improvement, even though it may be small.
Also, what, is it eighteen? No, that's.
We're just calling out the numbers we think are strengths right now? Is that what we're doing? So like, so sixteen?
Ooh, that's got some of the time, Gabe.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Still a strength.
I got to be honest, though, some of these questions, only being on the board for six months, like, I don't know.
Sure.
You know, so.
It's true.
You just don't know.
And I don't know is not a negative.
Right.
It's just, I don't know.
Yeah.
And Gabe, last year when we did it, I did the same thing. There's a lot of questions, I'm like, I have no idea what that's all about.
Yeah.
First time we're doing it, so. And that's just, you know, part of the process.
Right.
But again, sixteen, sixteen I would still believe is a strength.
Mm-hmm.
You know, but again, room for improvement. You know, obviously, we're treating each other with respect. Question eighteen. Number nineteen, again, that appears are a hundred percent wrong.
Hundred percent of most of the time. Sounds like, cannot fool me, man.
Still good. You got to go with positives.
Yes.
So that's all the good ones for standard one.
Twenty-one is pretty good.
Use collaborative process that results in well-informed problem-solving and decision-making.
Number?
Twenty-one.
Ron raised my standards. I don't think it's good.
You don't think with that one, y'all?
Yeah, Ron, you raised my standards.
It could be. It could. That's a good point, because that averages out, less than green.
I think if there's any of the some of the times in there, I would be a little hesitant on that one.
I agree. I don't have a problem taking that.
My handwriting's really messy on this, so what I'm doing is just capturing the numbers, and then I can type it up, and we can get it that way. So would you guys prefer to do the strengths of each of the five standards and then go back and do the opportunities for growth, and then talk about, you know, kind of focus or areas you want to?
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
So when we do this, we'll go through our strengths and our weaknesses, there's obviously four sections, it's probably going to take quite a long time. And then, so the idea of this is, this is going to guide us in the next step of the process? Is that the idea?
Yeah, so this process is really, again, about, you know, this part of it is about the board working together, the board's work, what the board does, and how the board does their work. And so it's your opportunity, really on an annual basis, to kind of assess yourself as a team and say, what do we think we're doing well? And what do we want to work on? And where are there opportunities for, you know, continued cohesiveness? So, I mean, this is a process that boards do. The board did it together here for the first time in a long time, and felt like it was helpful in saying, here's something that we want to work on as a board, so we can continue to get, you know, to be a high-functioning board.
So I would suggest.
And if you guys want to do a different little process tonight, I just kind of replicated what Tricia did with y'all last year, so.
What I would like to do, my suggestion would be, is let's take section one, let's do the same, weaknesses, go forward, plan, and go on to the next. I think because that way, at least, we're staying, instead of going all the way through and all the way back, and see if we can't get through section by section, and that way we can.
So, Ron, am I clear that we struck number twenty-one? And that ends standard one.
Yes, perfect. All right, so, if we want to look at the weaknesses or areas of improvement.
Thank you. Areas to grow.
Areas to grow. Opportunities, I like that. All right.
Which, there was a principle in our district years ago, she called them grows and glows. So it doesn't, you know, glows are once after, they're a hundred percent, but grows aren't bad things, they're just things that you have room to make improvements. They don't have to be a negative.
All right, growth.
All right, so obviously, number five, you come right out and say, we've got to commit to a clear and shared purpose. Obviously, we're some of the time on that.
I think you identified eight and nine already.
Eight and nine, yep.
And six?
Six.
It's kind of that middle ground for me, but.
Anything that's not.
It's not green or blue.
Sure.
That's fine.
I would skip to fifteen.
I want fourteen, fifteen.
I was going to say.
Fourteen, fifteen.
And if you're going to take fourteen, you've got the same thing on twelve, so you've got the same numbers.
Written protocol for its interactions. Yeah?
So, twelve and fourteen.
Should go seventeen.
That's what I was thinking.
Yep. Promote continuous improvements throughout the organization.
Twenty-one and twenty-two. Twenty-one's kind of hippie, but it does have the one that is only some of the time.
Wouldn't that, would we want to throw twenty in there as well, for professional development, improving force members?
Yes.
Yeah, so twenty.
Twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two.
Yep.
So then, I think the idea with this is that you take a look at how you've responded, what you see as the areas of strength, areas for growth, and then I would suggest, maybe instead of waiting till the, like, go through a standard at a time as we are, and then going, okay, we've just looked at what all of these things are. What do we collectively, not just, you know, based on the self-assessment and based on our experience, are there, is there a particular area connected to standard one that you want to focus on for this year, this next year, in terms of continuing to be strong in that area, or to grow in an area where you want to grow? Or to, is there an opportunity where there's less cohesiveness? So there's more, you know, variation in how board members responded? And do you want to, you know, is there an area connected to standard one that you want to focus on for this next year? And this is, I think, just more open discussion between you all, and I'll take notes. Yes.
Well, it seems to me that number five, you know, commit to a clear and shared purpose, would probably be right up there, except, yeah, it was very much a some of the time.
Part improved.
Yeah.
I think it's accurate, because sometimes, you know, I mean, I think that, my take on that would be, I think we all want great kids, and we have, and we want the kids to achieve, maybe we just have different ideas of what that means, and I think that's kind of what that reflects. Like, some of the times, yeah, we're kind of on the same page, we all sort of want the same thing, or I think we all definitely want the same thing. But how do you get there? That's the question, right?
And I think that's an important distinction, because again, it's a, I would like to believe that the goal is the same for everyone, is to put out the highest achieving children we can. And again, it's really, it's about the path that we're taking.
I think the key word on that might be purpose, so what is the purpose? So you have to name your purpose first, then we can determine how we come together and make that happen.
Anyone have any suggestions?
It tells us what our purpose is, to provide responsible school district governance. What may that mean? It might mean different things to different people.
Gabe?
I would, I agree with what has been said. I think if we're looking at it, I think eight and nine combined is probably a.
I agree.
Larger area of growth for us than four and five.
I think you want to focus on the biggest areas of growth. I mean, there's a lot of things that are right. And that's just standard one. We get to standard four, it means it's going to be here all night, so maybe focus on the things that have the biggest, the biggest variance, where we can come together. So carry out an annual assessment of its performance and set goals for its improvement.
Can I ask a question? So, so there's a little confusion here. Are we not doing four and working towards that? Is that what you're asking to completely disregard that?
No, I don't think we're looking to disregard it. I don't believe that's their intent. I think it's really more about what's the, where is the greatest area of differentiation?
Disparity.
Would be that, you know, we've got the greatest disparity in eight and nine.
Right.
So, and, you know, I think an argument can be made here that if we get clarity on, specifically on nine, you know, set goals for its improvement, you know, that would also, you know, we'd commit to a shared purpose. So I think the two are fairly similar. Now, maybe I'm being too broad, but I think that's, that would be the way I read it. Ron, do you have any thoughts on that?
I don't. I agree with everything that's said. I'm confused about carry out annual assessment of its performance. I thought we, I thought we'd do that, but I guess that's something that can be pointed out when we look into it.
I actually think this process of doing the self-assessment is the annual assessment of your performance. And so I just, I, I would kind of, I think, pardon me?
See, like, I'm confused why it's not all hundreds, because we're doing it.
Well, but maybe people didn't understand that this is that, that it may have.
So maybe we, maybe we grab one or two of each in each standard, that'll give us eight to ten, and then we can whittle that down to a couple for each, for each one.
And maybe even a couple overall. I mean, last year, I'm totally up to you guys, but I don't, yeah.
We'll get six, eight, do the whole thing, and then we can.
Those will be our touch points? Okay. All right, well, I think we'd all agree, then, you know, if we're really looking at answer question nine, is set goals for its improvement would probably be a good place to start.
That's kind of what tonight's about, right? So this is the annual self-assessment process, and then the opportunity to set those goals.
I think the other big one here is, you know, collaborate with colleagues across the region.
Number?
Number fifteen.
Fifteen.
I think that depends on which board member it is. Some of us do, some of us don't.
Exactly. Then also promote continuous improvement throughout the organization. Anything else you would like to add on there?
No, I would like to take off. I think we're expanding it so big, I mean, yes.
No, unless it's, you want to get down to a couple, so that's.
Yeah. I mean, I think we focus on one or two of them that we really can work on. I don't, like, fifteen, I'm, I think most of us do that. We collaborate with colleagues across the region, state, nation, regarding current trends, I mean, issues. I think, don't we all do that?
Somebody said never, so somebody thinks they don't.
Right. So, so I'm just kind of curious of what, discussion-wise, how we can improve that. I mean, I know I'm talking to people all over the state all the time, you know? I know Ron is as well, and I think Diane, you probably do as well, in your committees and stuff. You know, Gabe's worked on resolutions across the state.
I think it depends on how you read that, too. Is that individually, right? Or is that?
No, collectively.
Collectively, yeah, like, how do you?
Collectively, I think that's probably a good point. I collectively, I don't know that our board really does do that. Do we? Do we reach out to other boards and see what they're doing, and have that collaboration collectively with the board? I don't think we do that at all, but that'd be really tough to pull off also.
Well, it's not, because there are areas that have boards that all meet together. They're in a geographical area, and so they have, not all boards meet together, that's not the right way. They have meetings where the presidents of their boards meet collaboratively, because they're in a geographical area and things are very similar. And so there are places in the state that do that.
So like, that'd be a meeting with the Richland and the Pat, and the Pat's the boards together?
It could be, you know, your whole director area, or it could be the large schools in your area, or it could be, you know, Tarawon schools in your area. I mean, you can choose whatever you wish it to be.
I'm going to jump in here for a second, because I think, you know, Mike, I think you have a good point, that the bigger issues, I don't think that's, whether we're talking to our neighbors or not, is not going to really change how we interact in turn.
But it is an important thing, I think, because you do get good information, and you see where things are working, not working, similarities in our areas or within same-sized districts. You know, we have the large schools caucus through WASTA that we meet with, and that's helpful, and it does inform your board. You know, maybe it doesn't change things, but it does inform your board.
Sure. So how do you pull something like that off? You say, hey, guys, once a year, we're going to meet with all the boards in the tri-cities and?
Can we move on, and then try to work on that? Because I think that's a really good thing to do, but let's.
I'll go, let's move on to standard two.
So just for clarity, do you guys want to, do you guys want to do each standard? So, just for clarity, do you guys want to, do you guys want to do each standard, and then, or do you want to go, okay, for standard one, is there, if we had to pick one area that we would want to focus on, it might be this, and then go on to standard two, do strengths and weaknesses, pick one area, and then go back and see what you've picked for each of the five, and then go, maybe what's emerging is the highest priority for us right now? Okay, okay, so at this point in time, kind of based on the strengths that you've identified, or, you know, the, the areas of strength, the areas of potential growth, and there's been a lot of variation, is there?
What are we going to do with the strength, Tracy?
Well, I think what the strength just helps you go is, like, let's continue, this is a strength for us as a board, and so we want to make sure we continue to do, what are, you, you know, we don't need to spend a bunch of time on it, unless you want to, but, you know, what are the things that we do as a board that are making this a strength, and let's make sure we don't lose that? I, I heard, for example, the, somebody say, and I'd have to go back and look which question, but, you know, treating each other with respect and et cetera, and, and, you know, you went through a process of norms, these are always there, you hold each other accountable to those at meetings, and so it would be like, just like, we don't want to lose that, yeah.
And I would like, I'd like to propose number sixteen. I would like to propose that's the strength that we focus on, and which is for everybody, provide an opportunity for stakeholders, such as staff, students, parents, and community members, to make presentations to the board. Specifically speaking about the community members, the stakeholders, to me, the stakeholders are the parents. Parents are the primary stakeholders in this whole thing, and I think that listening to the parents, hearing feedback from the parents is the number one thing that, that we as a board need to be governed by and listen, and listen to. So I think that is, that we, we have more greens in that category than anything, and I would say let's focus on that one, because to me, that's one of the most important things that we're here as a board to do.
But it shows at this point, that's what we're, we have a very, we're doing that.
Right, right, so.
So that would be something we're currently doing, and we think we're doing quite well.
Yeah, so that's, that's my point, because we're talking about strengths, so focusing on that, like Tracy said, focusing on that strength, and making sure we don't lose that, and even how can we even improve on that? So, because we're going to identify one strength and one weakness, yes?
We could do more, but.
At least one, so that, that would be the strength that I would propose, that we try to make sure that we keep strong, and I think that's the most, of all these things, that's the most important thing, is listen to the stakeholders.
I'm just going to say one thing, process wise, I see, there's a tendency for, for you to want to look at me for a response, and I'm really going to stay in facilitator mode, because all I'm trying to do is help to facilitate a dialogue, for this part of the meeting, amongst the board, to help you talk and decide where you want your priorities to be, so it's really, it's not up to me, it's really up to you guys.
I got you. Board, Mike, if we're going to identify one main strength that we're doing well, and to make sure we continue to do and potentially improve upon, I'd like to submit sixteen, can we, what do you guys think? As a strength, something we're doing good at.
Well, then, obviously you are, I mean, again, the, the numbers show that we're doing as well. So, so like, once, you know, someone says some of the time, which is fine, the.
As the most greens.
Yeah.
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 I, I agree, it's a strength.
Is that our number one strength that we could write down and continue to focus on? Yes?
Well, the other thing we're doing is we're also honoring, we're honoring the role of superintendent, if we have, you know, that's.
That's all blue.
That's all blue. Delegating, I guess, no. But yeah, so.
So you want to go with those two, honoring the role of the superintendent, and listening to the stakeholders, so that's number eleven and sixteen?
Those are our strengths.
Primary strengths that we're going to identify.
Thank you, you meant, I don't, was it eleven, did you say eleven?
Yep, eleven, I'm, I'm proposing eleven and sixteen are the primary strengths that we identify, and that we can put those down, focus on those, and then just go the weaknesses of standard one.
If, if you wanted to look at it, though, then ten actually would, is greens and blues, only no yellows.
Okay, yeah, which is also superintendent, so.
Which goes, ten and eleven should probably go together, and then sixteen.
Okay.
Can we, so ten, eleven?
Ten, eleven, sixteen?
I think ten, eleven, and nineteen are all combined into one, that's all regarding superintendent, uh, trust commitments, I think that's one strength with those three, three questions, and then I think sixteen would be the other two out of the area.
Ron, are you the one that spoke to eighteen?
I'm not going to say.
Oh, I'm sorry, I, well, I remember, I remember somebody spoke to that, and I thought it was you.
Yeah, that's important to me.
Yes.
Go, go, go where you said, Mike, if we have a high level of green, we've almost reached that, but if we have, let's say, a green that's halfway there.
Yep.
We have room to make that green, then that's as high as the highest one we had. So shouldn't we focus on improving whatever we've done already well, making it better, so it's reaching that high level of the ones that you pointed out?
Yeah, so I think the idea is, first we identify a strength, then we identify a weakness.
No, no, I mean, yes, yes, I'm sorry, I cut you off, and I apologize, too.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm kind, yeah, I, I think you're right, and I think that all these strengths we do, like you're saying, we're, we're like getting close, so how can we just take that thing we're really good at and just move it to the next level, like what you're saying, right?
That's what I'm saying, so if we have one at that level almost, but you have another one that's halfway there, with a little more emphasis from us, we can get yet another standard at that high level.
Yes.
Yeah, but then you'd have three categories, you have a, things we're doing good at, things we're like medium at, and things we're not doing so good at.
Can I, can I propose that we throw eighteen up there as those three, and then we, we move on, we go through, because what if, what if we come through this packet and realize those are the three strengths in the packet? You know what I mean, like, so, so.
I have, I have no issue with that.
Yeah.
Okay, so I want to make sure, that's good, so I want to make sure, whether they were identified as strengths that you want to continue to build on, or areas for growth, when you look at standard one, what are, what are the numbers that you want me to put up here, that, then we go into standard two, and then we'll come back and look at all the numbers?
Got you, okay, so Tracy, the, there's three standards that kind of go together with the superintendent, ten, eleven, nineteen. And there's three standards, or two standards, excuse me, that kind of go together with the stakeholders, which is sixteen and eighteen. And so those are good things that we're doing well at, yeah, stakeholder, superintendent, yep. And so I, I think that's a good list, and if we keep, if we keep adding to it, then we're just, yeah.
Good on that?
Yep, okay, so now we go on, say in standard one, what things that we want to, if we can improve on, right? And look at standard one.
Okay, so just, I, I would, I, I would suggest, yeah, I would say, after you've looked, you've gone through and you've looked at all the strengths and all the weaknesses for standard one, I shouldn't say weaknesses, opportunities for growth.
You can say weaknesses.
For standard one, then, I think the question then is, if there's an area that you would want to focus on related to standard one for twenty-two, twenty-three, what might that be? And some, there's some discussion between, well, maybe we should continue to focus on our strengths to make those even stronger, or maybe we should focus on some of the areas for growth. So I would say if there's one or two areas for growth numbers, because then you're, I would suggest that you're going to want to whittle this down after going through kind of a reflection of the five, and pick one or two big areas that you want to focus on as a board.
Yeah, I wish, I think we kind of did that, right?
Yeah, but you, but, and, and again, you're going to want to look at it after, you're going to do this for five areas, and so, yeah.
Which is why we probably need to kind of zip through it a little bit.
Yeah, we're, now we're in, we got one standard, so.
Yeah.
I think it will move faster.
It will move faster now that you kind of got the, yeah, okay, so was there any particular opportunity for growth connected to one that you just want to highlight before we move on to two? Or not?
Yes, sixteen and eighteen for me, hands down, though.
That's strange, you, we're doing weaknesses now.
Oh, oh, sorry, sorry.
I would say we're, number five, commit to a clear and shared purpose.
Yes.
Okay, I like that. I don't even need another one, Mike.
There you go, perfect.
Standard two, and it's going to be.
I think the rest will fall into place when that starts.
Yep.
I mean, Mike's got to go to bed.
What's on her?
You got to go to bed.
I, I, I'm sorry.
You got to go to bed.
I do have to go to bed, I'm very tired.
Standard two.
So, so for strengths, would be thirty.
Twenty-eight, thirty, or.
Twenty-nine and thirty.
Twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty?
Not twenty-eight, because you've got a yellow. Twenty-nine and thirty. Thirty-one and thirty.
Thirty-three is the best one, thirty-three and thirty, right?
Everybody has odds.
Well, that's thirty-three, that's center three, actually.
Yeah, thirty-three.
That's center three.
Or thirty-five, thirty, yep, that's right, so.
Yeah.
Thirty-two, out of thirty.
Okay, so if you're looking at center two, the best scores are going to be number thirty, that's the best one, which is continually monitor progress towards goals and outcomes of the district plan. We definitely do that well, I mean, you guys are, I think you lead that, and it's very good, and Doug and everybody, I mean, Matt, constantly have updates, they're reminded of our, of the plan really, really well, I think I would like to have plan, part of making that plan next time, which I, which we do get, but I think that's, that's something we do very, very well.
We'd, we'd also do thirty-three.
Yes.
Thirty-three.
Facilities comply with current health, safe, secure, accessibility standards.
So thirty and thirty-three are the two, and those, can we, if we had to summarize those, we have, does that have to do with, like, the, the staff and the admin team?
Oh, wait, hold on, thirty-three is in standard three.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so we're, we're, yeah, we're skipping ahead to three, sorry.
So it would be thirty, twenty-nine and thirty. Thirty-one also should have been.
So what, regardless, which ones are more, most important, I think, which ones do you feel are the most impactful? Even, I say, even if the numbers are tied, or, which one is really the most important to you?
Number, you, you're talking about importance, I would say twenty-eight.
I was going to say, importance, or, or are we back to, what do we want to continue to move forward with?
Well, I think, I think it's both, I think, I think it's both, so.
Twenty. I think twenty-eight's the most important to me, collaborate with staff and the community, which that's the biggest part, is the community to formulate and maintain a plan.
The twenty-eight is not one of them, because it has a yellow, so we've got twenty-nine, thirty, and thirty-one.
But again, but even, yeah, it's fine, yeah, I, I think it's important, even if, even if the numbers are close, you know, we're, I don't want to get too hung up on these, these specific numbers, because again, we have three of us that it was, something we're always doing, but it's a, so again, if, Mike, I think that's, you know.
I mean, you asked two questions, if, which one did we get the best score on, thirty, there's no question, that's the best score, you can't even debate it, if you want to talk about which one's the most impactful, I would say twenty-eight, so there's two different answers. I mean, you can't debate numbers, right? There, there's, we have three, three greens and one blue, and that's the only one like that, so.
I think on thirty-one, that's sort of subjective sometimes, too, like, yes, we all agree that high expectations is the, that's why we're here, that's why we have schools, right? So I would hope that we would be continuing to move that more, as Ron was talking about, more to the green, that we need to be working with you, your staff, always, with the superintendent and staff, to, to move that higher, in whatever way we need to do that.
So that's something we want to work on for our opportunity.
Yes.
So we, so.
Yes, we want, we want to put that in, we're not using weaknesses.
Growth.
Listen, we can use, why can't we use weakness?
It is a strength, it's a strength, we are doing it now.
I mean, not everybody gets a trophy, if you didn't do a good job with something.
Can I finish?
Yes, sir.
Can I finish? It, you can have both, it's a strength, we are doing it, we can do better, that's, I mean, you can always do better, and so I don't see that as something we're not doing, it's something that we can dive into, where do we need to make better happen? It's not, it's not a bad thing.
Okay, so maybe to, to summarize, what I, I heard, thirty, thirty-one, this idea of ensuring high expectations for students, and what was the other one related to community?
We keep changing the goalposts, right? Like, we're changing the goalposts overnight, we can, we can improve on all of these, so let's just, I mean, the goalposts, we're changing the goalposts, right, like, let's just, like, what can we, one or two things we can improve on?
Maybe we'll just do, go ahead, Gabe.
Can I propose this real quick? I, I think twenty-eight, twenty-nine, and thirty are one, if you look at it in a fact of, you've, you're formulating the district plan, goals, and outcomes, which leads into working the plan, and the decision-making in the goals, which then turns into monitoring, to me, that's twenty-eight, twenty-nine, and thirty, so I think that collective is, is a strength in this standard.
And I think if we had this, you're going to see that on there, that, so when we can hopefully get that, I think you're going to see that there on.
Yeah, and again, I apologize, I think this process would be a little easier if we had that, the detailed one, so, you know.
That's okay.
Yeah, okay.
But I'm just saying, I think we're going to be able to see that in the future, that those do go together nicely.
Can you focus on that? Okay.
One to three?
Sure.
A lot of good in this section.
So I would say a strength would be forty-one, and.
Forty-four.
Forty-nine, fifty, fifty-one. Forty-seven, I mean, there's a lot of strengths in this one. Budget, budget, budgets.
I think the big thing, yeah, specifically, we've got lots of positive marks here on the budget.
Budget.
Yeah.
So you could put those together, again, they were going.
We can just plunk in this budgeting, budget, budget reporting, and oversight, because again, we're, we should agree, except we, we all gave that very.
Yeah, like, every budget question has a good score.
Yeah, and even in forty-three, while not necessarily budgetary, but evaluation and updating of technology, that takes money to buy those things, but the time spent to go through those things and look at those, and make sure that we're repairing or replacing, that's a, a staff thing, too, so I think that's important, that we have the staff to do that.
So Tracy, I think all the budget ones are strengths, I think we all agree on that, and then I would say, I don't know what the, what the rest of the board thinks, but I think forty-one is, is something we're, shows we're doing good at, and I think that that's something that we need to do good at, and just for the community, have a process that includes the community and parent involvement in selecting curriculum. I think that is one of the most important things, because again, the parents are the stakeholders.
I'd, I'd combine forty-five and forty-six as a, whatever we're calling them, gross, whatever. whatever.
Forty-five, forty-six?
Yes.
Yeah, so that's expectations around implementing effective instructional practices and evaluation to ensure efficient and effective learning environments.
As far as opportunities here for improvement, I would say, for me, thirty-six and thirty-seven have policy providing staff-based success and best practice for staff development.
I like that, Mike, yeah.
Those two, again, just those, those were, just seems, if nothing else, we need some clarity on that, 'cause I'm not sure, either we don't understand, or we don't understand the whole process of how that's being done.
I would, I would concur.
Ron, you're being awful quiet, you're making me nervous.
I'm fine.
Okay, good.
Good.
He's the thinking man.
Everything sounds okay with me, so nothing, nothing to say.
Want to move to four?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Just wanna make sure you're with me. I know you are.
So for, so for four, as a, as a strength, I would, I would put sixty-one and sixty-two. Review data, student achievement, measure progress towards his goals, evaluating, adjust to close achievement gaps, those are all threes with the exception of, I don't know, which. You just don't know what you don't know. And then I would, I would say for growth, fifty-six through fifty-eight has to do with just written goals, written goals for superintendent, communicate expectation of superintendent community, base decisions, only evaluation, performance achievement stuff, that's all something I think we can work on, too.
So I'd like to look at fifty-two and fifty-three together. Because a year ago, we changed the review, a little bit, the timeline of the review of when we look at the different programs, so, I shouldn't be looking at you, we, we changed the timeline of when we were reviewing things, I think that, that was very helpful, and that informs number three. And it, it could be that we don't always know what the SIPs are in the buildings, and so, not that the board necessarily knows there, needs to know everyone, but to know that the school improvement plans meet and are, you know, connected with the district plan, I think maybe we just need to be more knowledgeable about that. Not that, that we need to be informed by each building, but that we personally need to know on our own, so, I think we do well in those, but we can certainly improve.
So that it's not entirely, so that, so not that it's, it's not happening, it's just it's not being communicated to us?
Or, or maybe some people don't even know where to look to find out where those are?
Gabe, did you say sixty-one and sixty-two?
I. Yes, I said sixty-one and sixty-two.
Sixty-one and sixty-two.
As a.
As a strength, yeah.
If we did, if we did do this again, well, I think it might be good to have a slideshow for the community to kinda see if that's a possibility, but.
Oh, we're all of this?
Yeah, I mean. I mean, I, I can imagine, I don't know how I'd do it, but with maybe thinking through, but I can imagine, I can imagine the community is like, what is going on right now, right? And so, just something to think about. I'd like to be really, really open and transparent.
Is that good for five?
Yes.
Works around five.
No, or four, I mean, onto five.
So, I guess, so with four, are, did you pick, is there a particular focus for four, like you have for the other ones? You said these are the strengths, or are these the focus areas that you're saying?
The strengths are those two and then the.
Focus is fifty-six, which is written goals. And fifty-eight, which is base decisions about the superintendent's contact.
Fifty-six, fifty-seven and fifty-eight.
Okay, I've got it captured, I just wanna make sure I know where we are in the process, so, okay. Okay, so then standard five.
I think a strength is sixty-three.
Yep, sixty-six for.
Sixty-six is a good strength.
Yep.
Those are the two primary ones that stand out in this section, it seems like, sixty-three. So sixty-three and sixty-six, sixty-three is advocate at the local and state and federal levels on behalf of the students in the district, and sixty-three is follow an effective process for responding to questions, concerns, comments, and feedback, or feedback from the citizens.
I would use seventy and seventy-two as a focus, seek community and staff input, and carefully consider community and staff input and decision-making.
Do you want seventy-one also?
Yeah, seventy-one and seventy-two, sorry, combined.
Seventy-one, seventy-two.
Seventy-one, seventy-two, yep, thank you.
And I like, I like sixty-nine also as a growth, and maybe we can narrow that down, but I got sixty-nine, proactively disseminate information.
And that goes in that same area.
I, I was leaning with seventy as well, so it's almost like those four can be lumped into one around communication and input for decision-making.
So sixty-nine through seventy-two.
Round two.
Oh, boy. Here we go.
Yeah, look at this way, it took us an hour to get to the first one. We got through, or before we got through, in twenty minutes.
Exactly.
We made, we made.
I like that optimism, Mike, okay, let's do this.
So, so what I'm, what I would kind of suggest would be based on how you went, went about this and the discussion that you had, there's, I, I think some themes that sort of emerged, and maybe if you spend a few minutes talking about those themes, that might help, versus trying to go back to the numbers and what the question actually was, I mean, I think the value of this is in the dialogue that the board has and where you see those themes, and from that, maybe discuss, you know, I'd suggest one or two priorities that the board wants to focus on.
So, Mike.
Yes, sir.
We could actually narrow it down to themes. Instead of, this doubt, so give us then just saying, we wanna focus on community growth, like we said in the last, instead of just one of those, just capture that group, and say, let's, let's get community growth involved.
And that's, and that's great, because that's what Gabe, you know, Gabe was saying, you know, how we interact with the community, so that's, so, community interaction and disseminating information to the community, I think wants to be, is, is a, is a goal that we've seen across all of these games.
Example, we can, we can cluster this stuff together.
So, I just wanna capture what you said, you said community interaction and.
Oh, I, I was jumping ahead, I'm sorry.
It was just you thing.
I was using that last thing we did, so we can go back to the top and, and keep that in mind, if we, that's what we want.
Yeah, I like that, Ron, so.
Yes, so community interaction and dissemination of information.
So we do have five first, but it doesn't matter.
Sure. So these are essentially opportunities for growth right now.
Can you, can we slide that door shut a little bit so we can see the writing on it? So we can.
It's kind of a mess.
It at least gives us the numbers to reference.
Poor Joseph in there.
Yeah. Locked in the dungeon.
You know, as Mike has stated, we wanna make sure that we're including, you know, we wanna make sure we're including stakeholders, you know, parents, you know, public in all processes. That's in there, three or four different, and different wording through all of the various parts, standards.
Agreed.
I think that's great, even if we don't agree on who the stakeholders, we agree that the stakeholders, and evidently for each end is, is important, I, I like that a lot, include the stakeholders.
Gabe, what do you think?
Yeah, I mean, are we looking at having, like, that as kind of like one, and then we're gonna have the one priority or a couple priorities out of each one, right?
My, my thought here, again.
Overall, Gabe.
So I think the bigger issue is, I'd like to see if we walk out of here with, with three or four areas that we'd like to, that we'd like to focus on here for the coming year, and so again, we'd say we wanna work on a community interaction, disseminate information, we wanna make sure we're including the stakeholders in all the process, you know, let's see if we can't get, you know, two other things that we'd like to focus on as a board for, you know, the next twelve months.
Then I have a question for Ron. Should I ask it now?
Yes, sir.
So you said, you were talking about stakeholders, that we might disagree on who the stakeholder is, maybe we might wanna talk about that a little bit, like who?
Well, we don't, like, I don't think we need to debate trying to change each other. I, I think it's great that you have a stakeholder that you think is very important, I have one that's very important, yet everybody has one, and now we are covering a wide scope of stakeholders, I, you, you know me, I'm the kids, I think kids are paramount to whatever we do.
Yeah.
You cover the kids when you talk about the parents, so we're not disagreeing, you know.
There's a difference, yeah, okay.
It's just a different point of view of stakeholders, and I think together we're stronger.
Yeah, I, I, I do agree that, obviously, that the kids are, yeah.
Yeah, I think parents are important, so together.
Okay.
So Diane, is there any theme that you're seeing here, do you like to?
I was trying to see when we first started talking about that, when we were talking about working as a board and making our commitment to work together, and I was trying to see the exact words on there, and I didn't write it down. Dr. Pierce, right at the bottom.
So one thing it said we were good on was the budget seemed to be something that we were good on, and I think that that's gonna be a really, really important thing going forward, especially with the levy and the openness and communication and everything, so that.
The one that says strength, that's just.
Maybe that's something we wanna put up there.
I think we will.
So on question number seven, which went along with that, the defined process for input before decisions, so, do we, I wonder sometimes, do we get, I know we get information from staff always, but do we often get all of the information that we need before we're working on something? Because we make a decision, we make a vote, there've been times where we've needed perhaps more research, a few times we've sent that back, we'd like more research, and we send it back, and they bring up more, but sometimes things come up that I think we, we may not necessarily have all been able to get enough information to make a decision based on research based, which you can talks about in here, too. So, I, I think that's a strength in ways, but one that we could grow on, so I'd like to just personally, you know, find more ways for me to find that, but also that we get that from staff.
So just making sure we're getting all the information we need in order to make a formal decision.
Yeah, and I'm not saying that staff is not providing that, I'm just saying we need to all make sure that we get research-based information to make our votes on that.
So how do you, so just, I'm trying to figure out how we phrase that.
I kinda, I'm having troubles, is there like examples of what you're referring to?
When we talk, no, and I'm not picking on anything in particular, we talked about that's a strength, and I think that is a strength, because our staff brings us very good information. But let's say it's a Wednesday and they bring us great information, and they give us all the information, and then we vote, there might, it might be helpful to have more information in advance to make those decisions, whether that's us personally making, you know, information, looking for information and finding it, or getting it in an earlier timeframe.
I think that's more, I think that would be more of a, a procedure or something, is something as simple as making sure we get the, our board packets on Friday and no, no changes before we get that, is that what you're talking about?
Sometimes, sometimes, and, and that's, I'm not saying that there's anything wrong with what's being presented to us, I just think that a longer timeframe of having that information, so if I read something on a Friday afternoon, and then I'm taking Saturday and Sunday to dive in to look for more, I send, you know, a question to you, to Dr. Pierce, and then somebody has to run around like crazy and find information and then make changes, whereas there might be a little better time lag sometimes to, for us to do our personal looking for it, or asking, that's mine, because I like to look, I like to, you know, I like to ask somebody in.
Sure.
Canvas or where, or who's done these things, and sometimes time is short.
Does that mean our board package earlier?
No, no, 'cause I don't know that that's even, I'm not talking about staffing, I'm talking about just getting information earlier, so if we're going to talk about, I'm making this up, title one, this coming Wednesday, if we could talk a couple weeks in advance, so we're gonna be talking about title one, you know how we say for the next board meeting in two weeks, we're gonna talk about whatever, maybe we could talk about that, set that up a little earlier.
So we can talk about two board meetings in advance?
If we could, I mean, there are some things you can't, I understand that.
Sure.
But.
Sure, okay.
I.
Well, and we can, we can look at that, 'cause a lot of that stuff is on the calendar about what we have coming up for discussion.
Right, and some of that can't be changed, but some of it can be.
Correct, okay, well, I think that's more, I think that's more of a procedural base, but it's.
Yeah, we said that's a strength, but I don't, I don't know how you wanna put that in there, but just additional time for board research, I don't know.
And kind of before decisions?
Yes, before vote, yeah.
Just on that, so I'm kind of making sure I'm following, I'm thinking like, here, here's an example of, I think, of what you're talking about that I think was maybe a positive example. With the current health adoption, there was an initial presentation, sort of here's where, and it wasn't on the same night where the board was asked to make a, a decision or where the committee was bringing forth a recommendation, so it gave you information, it gave you time to digest that information, to maybe seek additional information before being asked to make a decision about it, okay?
Because that was a whole month in advance.
Exactly, okay, thank you, that, that's good.
Okay, so the other themes you guys wanted, so we got community interaction, stakeholders. Okay. So the other themes you guys wanted, so we got community interaction, stakeholders, um.
Are we talking strengths and growths or just kind of whatever, each one?
Sort of the culmination, I think, of what you all just kind of reflected on and what might.
So I'd like to propose, so we have stakeholders, we have community, we have. Research for us. What, what about, so we identified potentially forty-five and forty-six, learning as a area for growth. So, so I'd propose we utilize that. As something to continue to grow on as a, as a priority. So effective instructional practices and evaluations. And I think I'd like to see how we're. Monitor, I guess, in the classrooms, how that looks like.
So you're talking about evaluations?
Well, forty, forty-five and forty-six. So communicate an expectation, all classrooms implement effective instructional practices. Provide evaluations of district operations to ensure there's an efficient and effective learning environment. So I, I, I'm, I'm saying that because. Right now we have, you know, the themes we have are community interaction, stakeholders and for ourselves, but. What about actually getting in the classroom and making sure those things are running smoothly and we have experts that can get in there and. Review and tell us.
Is it evaluation of classrooms or of district operations?
Oh, I guess I, I guess I'm reading, reading that different, or reading it wrong then.
I would say I think it, it's both connected in that I think the board. Needs to ensure that there's good policies, practices and systems in place for monitoring of. Instruction and evaluation of staff. That's not directly what the board does. But the board needs to make sure there's policies and procedures and systems for that, that I ensure are implemented with staff. Would that be fair? And so I think what I'm kind of hearing is that there might not be, you know, we do an annual kind of. We, we do like one or two slides on this is how the systems of like professional growth and evaluation and professional development work. But we have not gone, at least since I've been here, into real depth with the board around how all of that works.
And like an overview of T-PeP.
Yeah, that's, yeah, exactly. All of that.
I'm a little confused because I don't, I didn't see forty-five and forty-six making the board. Did I miss it?
Uh, they're, they're just behind Tracy. And I, and I combined them. I, I just wrote them different when I read them initially.
So one thing that wasn't in the survey, that I don't know if this is the right time to bring it up, was. Uh, school safety, and that wasn't really in the survey, but that's something I think that should be.
So right after this part, and I think we're probably near, nearing completion of this part, we're going to get to. The district priority work that you all did. So again, this is focusing on the work of the board.
Gotcha, okay.
And then we're going to get into like the work of the district, what you identified as priorities in January, where we are with those. And then planning for next year.
Great, okay.
Okay.
Is that?
Thirty-three. Thirty-three is where I saw it. Safety, security, accessibility.
Okay, and then thirty-four actually, you know, goes with it.
Okay. So is everyone good about, good with those four, four themes?
Absolutely.
And I think this is all going to come together as we do the work of the district and look at the board calendar. Okay, okay. So. Yeah, no, you.
A, a high, good thing we did, budget.
We did really well with the budget.
I don't see that. Maintain the high standard we set with the budget.
You know, that's going to be, that's going to be really important going forward with the, with the next levy as well, well, so that's certainly something I agree with Ron and Shab on that.
Is that good?
Yes, thank you. I'm not, I'm not talking to you.
Perfect. Okay, good. So we ready to move on?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
So, we're, so we're now on C twenty.
Yeah, like the work, I, I don't have to find my agenda here, but that chunk of the work of the district. So this is the part where you can't talk to me, Ron. No, but because that part really focused on board work, it's, it's, you know, that's why it's not my job to. You know, tell the board what they should or shouldn't focus on. But this part really is about work of the district, which of course is. All of our work. So, a- and some of it is spoken to in the self-assessment in terms of. As a board, do you ensure that we, as an organization, have a clear plan, have clear objectives, have high standards for student learning? You know, have processes for reporting back to the board and to the community of where we are on, on all of these things. So you, you are all familiar with our strategic plan, our mission, our vision and our goals. And those stay the same every year. And every year, we specify objectives, which are work items. That we're going to do as a district team to continue to grow and improve in that area within the spirit of continuous improvement. So in January, at the board retreat, board went through a process of identifying. What were some priorities that the board had for the district to continue to focus on? And those really fell in four different buckets. One was safety, and that was just mentioned. Student safety, safety of students on campus and continuing to do all that we can do to keep our students and staff safe. There was a whole, you know, bucket, I guess, of COVID-related items at that time. Funding, which was just brought up by Mr. Mabry. And again, this was, you know, um. Before the first levy in, in February, that levies and budget and funding. Because funding is how we do the things that we do for our students to get the results that we want for our students and staff. I mean, I, I know sometimes I hear people say things about, you know, all you guys are talking about is money. And, and it's not because, it's because it's through money and funding, we fund people and programs to support. And provide services to students. And that's just a reality. So funding is a category that is important, and the board identified that as important. And then that category of student learning and performance, which I think Mr. Galbraith just kind of alluded to too, ensuring that. You know, we're, we're, we're getting good outcomes for our students, that they have good quality classroom experiences. And the board at that time specified state data in terms of, you know, state assessments and how our kids doing. Also, an, an idea of like having what kinds of pre-apprenticeships and pre-employment kind of credits and opportunities, different pathways and opportunities. For students, which I think goes right into increasing graduation rate, and not just increasing the rate, but keeping kids engaged. In schools and excited about learning and seeing school as relevant and connected to what they're potentially interested in doing after high school. So I'm just bringing this back because this is what you all had identified. Now, we had. January's mid-school year. So we had already set our objectives that are specified in the strategic plan of the work items. And that was done previously with the, with the prior board. But I can tell you that much, many of these things were already. In our strategic plan, objectives for last year. And I can kind of give you, and you'll hear more about this when we talk about goal setting. Because all of this, again, is connected to cabinet and superintendent goals, which are how you hold me accountable, right? So we can go more into that, but I'll just touch on a few things. So one of our objectives, and you've got a copy of this. Current strategic plan this school year, as well as the annual report, just so we can refer to it along with the K. The key performance indicator document. But I'll just highlight a couple of things to make sure everybody's really seeing the connections. So last year, prior to this conversation, when we were working on the objectives. For the school year, you know, the safety ones that we specified were the, you know, we, we ask every building to set. Student safety goals. They look at their student survey and other data, and they set goals focused on student safety. And another one is about the drills that we do. And I'll, I'll highlight nine. Partner with KPD to provide safety active shooter training for all schools and district office staffs. So that was an objective that was set last year, a work item. That work item has been completed. That was done this year. KPD came out and did situational awareness. And active shooter training at every single site, not just our school sites, but this building included, uh, and our facilities building included. And so that's, that's, you know, something that we did and we have evidence to show that we've completed. And this is a, an area of focus that's never going to go away. Right? But the objectives and the things that we do every year might change. And that's where we need input from the board about what do you see as priorities, so we can incorporate that into, into. This, the objectives for the year, our goals for the year. And then there's a process where those goals come back to you. And you all approve them earlier in the year, like toward the beginning of the year. We, we do some work over the summer, et cetera. So I think that, that's just one example. So I think the question is that the board could talk about is. Are, are these areas of focus, student safety, this COVID one, funding, including levies? And budget and student learning and performance still the areas of focus? Do you, do you have different areas of focus and priorities for next year? And so, you know, you can have this conversation however you want, but this is really our opportunity to hear from the board about what do you want us to be. Focusing on to help inform the objectives that we set as we update our strategic plan for next year.
I, I have, can, can we expound upon them? I, I don't think there's anything, but I think like, I'm gonna give you an example. Increase graduation rate should also increase graduation success level. The grades should increase, not just we got someone graduated, but we should increase the level that we. Achieve graduation. We should have more As and Bs. Right, that's something. Just increase the. Level of success. Is that, I don't know if I'm saying it right, but.
Well, we're trying, we're trying to raise the. Yeah, we're not trying to push them through and say, here you go, you know, get out, you get out with, you know, D's.
Right.
Way to go. We want to make sure they go out and set, we want to set them up for future success and.
Is there a way we can monitor after, you know, like if, um. Connecting students with, with jobs, right? Like especially some of the trades, you know, is there a way we can monitor? I don't know if there is or not, but. You know, fifty percent of our kids that graduated had jobs within, I don't know, something like that. I think that also determines success.
We do that with our special education students, not with the general education students.
It would be tough, yeah.
That's a lot of kids.
We have to go chase, chase people down like every now and then, what?
Because they, with special education students, they call each student and talk to them or their family. So, I mean, that's a lot, you know, and that.
And, and these are ideas, so I'm just throwing them at the wall.
All the ideas out.
Uh, we, you just brought up a good example with our annual objectives, number nine with the KPD. What if we add and disseminate that we either have this training plan or we disassess the plan? I know we send out the weekly for, hey, we did this. But like with K, KPD, I don't know, did you guys know that? That was held here at the district?
Yeah, I came to it.
I didn't know.
One of the weekly.
You know, it's pretty bad when Gabe is the only one. I'm kidding, Gabe.
Oh, yeah, what I know, when I know, when I know it's real bad.
It came out in Dr. Pierce's week.
Yeah, I know. Okay, okay. I guess what I'm saying, outside of us. Outside of us. And I know, I've seen, I'm sorry, I've seen where we put that announcement out. Hey, this is kudos, K, KSD kudos. But I, I think this is something monumental when it comes to safety and all that, is that we don't just say it, we need to shout it. This is what we're doing to protect our kids and staff and.
So like on, on the website, Ron, every week, you know, when new great things are happening, they put something up. Is that an area that you think that would?
No, I think outside the website. I think we want to reach out into the community, not the community reaching out to us.
Okay, we want to push the information.
Yes.
Like to media places.
Yeah, news story. Yeah, anything like that, yes.
Yeah, I'd like to expand on the safety as well. And there's so many different ideas that we can add in there. I don't know if it's the time to do it, but. To add in there to make safety a bigger. You know, I mean, the last thing you want to do is lose a student, right? So there's lots of different things. I, I mean, the gun training was great, but it's essentially like run and hide, right? That's kind of what the training was. I mean. On a, on a personal level, like, I know this is not going to be popular with a lot of the community, and some people it's going to be really popular with. But on a personal level, I, I carry, you know, I, and I can tell you if I was in a school and I had my. Carrying my gun safely and that shooting happened, then, you know, we wouldn't have got thirty kids. So that, that, that can be, that's a safety discussion, I think. Bathrooms is a safety discussion. Where, where do incidents happen? You know, I think that we, all those things is, that we should, we should expand and talk about.
The, uh. So we're, so I, I think the big issue is we want to continue to.
Focus on safety, for sure.
Consider on safety and, and all of its.
And expand it, yes, in all its forms, yes.
Under, under student learning and performance, counseling, and I'm not, counseling for health purposes. And career purposes. Again, I would like to have opportunities more. Announced, focused on. I was told yet another year's gone by where we left scholarships not applied for. And I would just, that's just an example.
Yeah, it's a good one.
I would love if we had a career day where we sit down and kids can come in and we help them fill out applications. I think that's been done before.
Success coordinators.
Something like that, something that says, hey, seniors, here's a resource, either here at the district or at the individual schools.
I like that, Ron.
Well, we went, I'm not sure if you guys have been to the, the career evening they have at TRITech. I mean, I went a couple of years ago and that was, I mean, it was just a madhouse, man, it was a standing room only. And it, and it was really, really. Well attended by not only, you know, potential employers, but also kids and their, and their, and their parents. I mean, it was, it was packed. And that was a really, again, you know, almost three years ago, but it was a really, really well programmed. And again, so if we could find a way to do. More of those.
And, and coaching on there, I guess, and coaching kids out too.
So I know that the career, career success coordinators send out to the seniors. Every single thing that's available, not necessarily just for left-handed kids for left-handed. But then getting them to do that, to fill it out, there you go.
There you go.
That's the part.
And, and that information should go to parents. Because I'm a senior, I'm about to graduate, that is gonna go.
That's right.
Right. And then you're gonna look at your parents and say, hey, for my four years of education, I'm speaking from experience.
Yep. Oh, I know.
Anything else you guys like to see on there?
Yeah, when I look at this thing, to me, you know, there's four different categories, right? Understanding the COVID, I almost think that we could almost take that one away at this point. And I think you could, and I think you could replace it maybe with like. The community piece, like, like connecting kids to the community, getting parents in schools, um, yeah, community involvement. Like that was, that was our number two up there, you know, from the themes. I would like to see that. And then on the student performance, I'd like to expand on a little bit. And then the safety, expand on a little bit. And then the funding, obviously, I'd really like to focus on transparency. And, and then obviously, you know, transparency, especially as it, as it relates to the levy, the next levy. Does it have any issues with any of that?
Well, I, would you put?
So if you were to replace.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. So, so would you, would you put the, the, this parent interaction, could you put that under student learning and performance? Because you're, you're ultimately getting parents to come in and interact with.
Yeah, you could.
Yeah.
Yeah, so just kind of have three of them and sort of. So just kind of have three of them and sort of.
So are you suggesting we just completely remove the understanding and navigating COVID? Do you want to replace it with something or just remove it?
I was suggesting replacing it with something, but Mike says that what I was replacing with sort of falls under the student learning and performance, but I kind of think that I would, I would like to replace it with community.
Okay.
Which is, if you look at our, where is it at? On this deal right here, you know?
Right.
Yeah, I mean.
Community goal and a parent goal.
Yeah, so like.
So you could put it under.
You know, and, and I think under the bucket, like Tracy, the term, to use Tracy's terminology, under the bucket or in the bucket of community, you're talking about connecting kids with the community, connecting, I mean, there are some overlap, Mike.
No, I'm just, I'm just.
Yeah, yeah.
And when we talked about stakeholders earlier, so you could put it under community stakeholders, however.
Yep.
Communication.
What?
You guys have any issue with that?
No.
Would you have a comment on?
I was moving on to my next idea, so I can't wait.
Ron, yeah, he's done, he's moved, he's out.
You know, sorry.
Well, so let's, let's just, let's just finish up on that. So if you guys want to, again, I'm, I'm good, if you guys want to take out the, the COVID column.
Wait, 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 that does apply to what I was thinking.
Okay, great, what you got?
All right, it's, we, we stick with that type of theme, but with the crisis, because we don't know what the next crisis is. COVID was a crisis.
Yes, for sure.
And so if we're standing on top of crisis and how are we going to respond to crisis? Are we going to keep schools open during crises or keep kids in? So I think that, that, that covers COVID, but when COVID goes away, believe me, my experience, that's another crisis.
What you just said, with, could that and a little bit of the COVID, could that kind of go under student safety in a little, yeah?
Here's why I think not.
Okay.
Student safety, I think, is covered with the campus, the safety, keeping kids and not getting, even bringing up shot or whatever. I think understanding the next crisis, like, let's say if we have a fire, we, we're gonna go through wildfire season. If we get fires surrounding our county, are we gonna keep kids in school? Are we gonna keep them, are we gonna send them home? If the dangers of them might getting caught up in the blazes? All those things, we have an understanding, we talk about it now before it happens, and when, if it happens, we're ready. Not, and I think student safety is, okay, I'm gonna send my kid to school today, I want my kid to come home. All whole, all ten fingers and what have you. I think that's now, today, right now. I think understanding a crisis is what could happen.
So if we call that crisis management, which would be keep schools open, keeping kids in school, bringing person full-time, and then talk about, because there, there's something in there, I can't remember how it was phrased, but it's just a matter of, is, is continuing operations at the school?
Right.
What's, how is that, how's that phrased?
It's the comprehensive emergency management plan, which kind of speaks to what you're speaking to and it, it irrespective of the, the, the emergency.
Right.
And it's continuity of operations and how, if there were an emergency or even, I mean, I hate to say these things, though, if something happened at a particular school, like it burned down, you know, how do you continue the operations for tho, those students, ensure that meals are served? So that's what our continuity of operations plan, and you're right, it has to be continually sort of updated along with incident command and, and all of that. So, you know, we could, I'm thinking, based on what you're saying, we could have that crisis management, comprehensive emergency management is a bucket and community involvement and engagement as a, as a new bucket.
Can I play devil's advocate here just a little bit?
Sure.
So, and not to be contrary to Ron or anything, but like, but it's, it seems like, you know, we're spending a lot of time on a hypothetical. I mean, what if we spent a bunch of time on what would happen if we got a fire and it just never happened, then what have we spent our time on? You know, we have a plan and I, and I think it's a good idea to revisit that plan and potentially go through it and spend a couple hours or something, but.
Honestly, if you're not preparing for the future, it's gonna smack you right in the face. And I would, and I hear what you're, I don't think we spent a lot of time, right? I think we spend some time on all these things. We don't spend a, a lot of time on.
That's true.
We, we just give it, we, we determine how much time we spend on.
Okay.
And time spent originally will save you time, which is important, but perhaps dangerous situations and/or life. My daughter works for Washington State Patrol for the Fire Training Academy. That's what they do every day, is do incident management plays, you know, what's gonna happen. And so we have had fires that came very close to our buildings, very, very close to some of our buildings. We have had horrible floods, we've had some accidents that blocked our kids on the freeway for hours in the ice. So there are some things that do happen to us, you know, may not happen frequently, but when it happens, it's a danger. And so that is a, a safety and, and good planning thing. And we have people in our communities that are very skilled at that and we have heard people, Ron probably knows some of those people, that, that do that for a living and we could certainly benefit by their added information.
Yes, Kate.
Student learning and performance, we have performance. Do we, I know we just went through, did we have some, have we done?
Fiscal.
Have we done, did we have any audits or have we done any audits? Like, I've, I've heard Richland went through one like a couple years ago. I don't know, well, I was assuming it's a full-blown thing, have, have we done one of those recently or do we do it regularly or?
Financial audit every year.
Yeah.
We get it paid for, about 50K.
That's financial, I, I think we're.
Yes, we do.
So if there are problems, then you go farther.
There, so there are a couple state audit processes. One is the financial audit that is an annual area. The other area is called, and I'm looking at my team here because it's the comprehensive, what is it called?
Comprehensive program review.
Thank you. Comprehensive program review. So those are, those are audits of programs and they're external audits of programs. And there's like the financial audit where they focus on particular areas each, each cycle. The comprehensive program review from the state is a similar sort of. Now, we do our own, and that's something we can, we can talk about too, we do our own internal program reviews on a continual basis and sometimes on a, on a more targeted basis. So I'll give you, I'm trying to think of a good example. I've mentioned it maybe, I think, at the last board meeting, is we look at our overall program of assessment, and you've mentioned that, and you had a question, I think, particularly about like how many assessments are kids taking and how much time is it taking to assess and those kinds of things. That's actually one of the things on our list, is we start to put together our list of areas of focus connected to our strategic plan. We want to do, and it's not an external audit from the state, but we want to do an internal review of our program of assessment and, and, and look at that and think about return on investment and, and what are we doing with the data? And are we, you know, there's certain state assessments that are, you have to give and that's, they're non-negotiables, but there's also district assessments that we provide, we give and we've historically done. And sometimes, you know, we, and this is true of all organizations, I think, and especially school districts, we sometimes tend to go, oh, well, we do that because we've always done that. And, and I think it's healthy to go, okay, well, we may have done that for a long time and, and is, is it still serving its purpose like it would, you know, initially was, or is there a different and better way to do it? So we, we, we come up with on our own those areas, and it might be through board feedback or just areas that we've identified that, yeah, this is something we really need to look at. And then there's also an external program review audit that comes from the state. And so, I mean, if there was a particular area, in fact, I have it on the notes for, for later, I remember Hi-CAP had come up a couple of times from, from Ms. Sunvik, and you know, that's another area that we haven't done our formalized internal, you know, goal setting kind of, but an area that we, you know, might want to look at is how, how are we providing Hi-CAP services and are, is what we're doing, you know, is it something we just need to look at periodically? What I will say right now, we don't have, and this is something that we might want to do, is we don't have all of our programs, like if you, I think about our programs of, you know, whether it's CTE or assessment or literacy, we have our, our curriculum on a cycle, right, of review because when, and that aligns with our curriculum adoption process. So when we're, when, we've got a calendar for that. So when, for example, world language, right, just was up for adoption. So that's really an opportunity to review our world language program and the learning standards and modes of instruction and all of that, and then adopt curriculum. So it's really, that is a program review cycle. What we don't necessarily have is like things like Hi-CAP or CTE or those kinds of departments on a formalized, like every five years, we're gonna do a particular review or something.
And then we had a, a third-party audit, if it's only considered an audit, that's on like, I'm just, and I don't know if it's even accurate, but like the health of the district in all areas or anything like that, or it's all just individualized, we do our own audits of the state.
Well, we, we, the special education, Title I and nutrition services.
Yeah, I mean, the state does all of that. When you say third-party, you mean like not the state, but some other, not federal.
That's audits to ensure that, I can't remember, the overall health of the district in all areas of, anything.
I'm kind of, I'm looking, I don't know, Ron's probably got the most history of the district or, I'm not, I don't know.
I don't know of anything we've done outside of what the state has had, was done, any other, you know, we had Dave Moore and associates come through, but that was red in his work.
Right, right. That's a good example.
I, I would assume that, that those types of audits would be, if that's something we wanted to do, we'd want to make sure we were asking for a very specific slice, because as you started saying, you know, how do we look? It's like, oh, God. It's just, it's just, it's too much. So we, so if there's something, if there's, I believe, third-party audits have a great place, as long as they are well-defined, very specific, we want to focus on this specific area, you know, and we want you, ex-company, to come see how we're doing on this spot because maybe we see a weakness or a deficiency. Does that, does that make sense?
Because you'd want to find a third-party that is very specifically well-trained and has done thousands and thousands of those audits.
And in my world, I deal with third-party auditors all day, every day, and they always find a problem. It doesn't matter what you do, and so it's just, it's just a fact. So the more, the broader the deal, the more issues you're gonna find. So, anyway. So anyways, back to this, let's do this and let's take a quick break here. So again, I, Mike, I think it's, I think that community involvement is a great area to put on there if that's what we want to do. And, and I also like Ron's idea of, of changing this, the, the COVID to crisis management and start focusing on some of that, so we're paying attention to it. Because again, to your point, whether it happens or not, let's make sure we're, we're prepared, because preparedness is, is key. And we never know what it's gonna be, but if we have a plan in place, I think that would be a good way to go. And you guys have any thoughts or agreements, disagreements on that?
I would agree.
Okay. Perfect.
So just before the break, just so you know, so the, the next, the next part, which is the last part of part one, before we get to part two of the agenda, would be for you all to look at a draft, kind of skeleton of the board meeting calendar for next year, because really the work and the areas of focus and priority should drive the, the calendar. And so what you have here, you've got two. So I wanted to bring what's currently in place, which is this year's, and I wanted to show you how this is an evolving document. It starts off as a skeletal and where we plug in, like these are the annual reports that we provide to the board around, you know, student growth and proficiency, around our family survey data with enrollment updates and budget updates. So you'll see that on the 2223 version that says draft at the top, it, it shows some reports and data, and those are those things that are right now on a, on a kind of annual cycle, an annual reporting cycle. If you look at the 2122, you can see that there's way more things on here because they get added along the way, either because the board says this is something that we'd like to talk about, or, you know, out of necessity, obviously, we added more levy-focused meetings last year after the levy failed in February and, you know, spoiler alert, we're gonna need to do that same thing this year. And so, and there's also, you know, policies and different things that come out, come, come up throughout the year, right? So as you think about these areas of priority, student safety, crisis management, community involvement, funding, levy, you know, student learning and performance, if there's times you want to build in for study sessions, for planning sessions, you know, in addition to board meetings, this would be an opportunity for you to talk about that and then I could take back those thoughts and, and further build out the calendar. And then the calendar does come to you formally as a board and you approve it, and then we work from that calendar moving forward. So does that all make sense?
Yeah.
Okay. And I added one, just thing I want to point out, and then I know we want to take a break, but, but a couple, just so I wouldn't forget those things that I've mentioned them already, but things that I do think, you know, you've asked some questions about Hi-CAP along the way, and so I think even just a report about like the current state of Hi-CAP is something that we haven't really reported to the board on, so we should probably do that. Levy is definitely one of your priority areas, it's one of our priority areas. We're gonna need to build in some, I, I would recommend study sessions along with kind of the, you know, formal presentations to the board, because we need, we need board direction around the levy plan. I mean, you all put, approve, I mean, we take your input and put together a levy plan that goes before the voters, but it doesn't go before the voters until the board approves the resolution to go before the board, voters. So we, I think we need to have some pretty adequate time for levy conversations. And then I, I think at the last retreat, the idea of study sessions are more sort of like, this kind of thing focused on a particular topic, whether it's levy or other stuff, came up, and now would be the opportunity to want to build in time for that. Kate?
Sounds great.
Okay.
Right, you guys want to take a five-minute break?
Yes, please.
Okay, we'll come back at 7:40.
So was that to wrap up of part one? Did you conclude part one just in?
After the calendar?
After the calendar?
Airflow this year.
I don't really care.
Thank you. No, I'm not going to.
No, not me. Let the kids do. Micah asked me that too. Like, well, you can wear whatever you want underneath, but I didn't think about shorts and flip-flops. I figured, I mean, I should be.
It'll be cooler up there with the air. Last year was.
Remember you elevated, so.
That's true. But you do, but you do have some air moving.
Well, but you can see what's going on.
Oh, yes, that too. Well, that's true, too. So don't wear your kilt, okay?
All right, let's reconvene, please. So next is the, so we want to talk about the board calendar one more time? Or what do you want to?
Yes.
Yeah. So, so all I did was put together sort of the pattern of what is current, right? That the board typically meets, has two business meetings a month, except for some months, based on vacations and holidays. We have a regular cadence of when we present information to the board. You've just identified some priorities. We need to think about levy. I was just confering with Vic a little bit, and we agree that there should prob, we would recommend, I should say, that we have, that the board has maybe two study sessions focused on levy in probably September and early October. You might want to build in some other study sessions. What I don't know is, do you want to convert existing board meetings to study sessions? I mean, by law, the board has to meet once a month, right? There's nothing, so, and lots of boards do have an alternating kind of thing about meeting and study session. And if there are consent items, you can always just do the consent items and then come to study session. So it's just a different, you know, you don't have to necessarily add meetings to put in study sessions. We can combine things.
May I comment on that? It seems like our meetings are cramped, though. I don't see how we can eliminate. Because when we have a meeting, we're here pretty late. We're covering a lot of topics.
Yeah, I do agree. I also think maybe we can zip through some of the presentations a little quicker. I think that would help, you know?
We've done that. We've looked into that in the past, yes. But I think, yes, and we have to agree upon what we feel is important. Where we want to spend the most time on, a nice amount of time. So as a board, we have to decide that. Right, right, Mike.
That is correct.
And just can I add one more thing? So in all of these things are really up to you, right? Like, we, we have historically done these on a, on a regular basis, like done an annual presentation about building safety goals. If you would prefer that in a different format, and not a presentation, but in a, on a consent or something, however you want to do it, we'll do it that way. So it's really up to you. The first levy or the second levy?
Got information in October.
It's here. The levy resolution, yes, was November 17th. So that's when the board. So the, I mean, there's, if, if the board wants to put a levy forward for the February 23, I'm sorry, I'm just trying to get my months and years right, then there's a timeline, right, for when that, and I'd have to just double-check the elections office. But typically, that is November. And so that's why we, we tend to do it like close to. It has to be filed by December 1st or something like that. So that was the board meeting prior to when the resolution had to be filed with county. The only thing is, with, when that, you really should have the study session way in advance, because that's the night where you have to, you have to have a business meeting, because you don't take action at study sessions. So that's when like the levy resolution is finalized and comes to the board after a whole bunch of processing for final approval, and you vote on it. And that was for the April.
Yeah, that was for the second one. Yeah, okay. Yep. I strike that from the record, then.
But the thing, I could see what you're thinking, so on the right track. It's just the dates.
So it would need to be in October.
So I'm very hesitant to add more meetings. However, we've also got, you know, passing this levy is a big deal. So, you know, to me, the only one we really could even possibly replace would be the October 12th meeting. If you guys want to replace that with a study session.
Well, and as Dr. Pierce said, you could do the consent, open consent, close, and then study session. So you could get at least the, that business part.
Then we can have the reports, the building safety goals, facility safety updates. We can get those as a consent item.
I could do that, or we could add them to a different. I mean, if you want them, we could make them brief, because they're sort of, they follow a pattern.
Yeah, I mean, they could make your brief like five minutes each or something.
And we could put, I mean, we could move those to another meeting. Vic, I'm going to just ask you, I was kind of talking to Vic during the break, but, so we, a, a, a study session in October, like mid-October, is that too late, based on the timeline for consideration? I mean, just what are, I just want Vic's opinion on that, too, because.
September 28th.
So would you rather replace the September 28th meeting?
Okay, thank you.
So let's do the 28th, September 28th. We've got a study session, we approve.
And at that point, you could decide true, I mean, also, you know, if you wanted to add another, another study session after the September 28th one, if you feel like there's more to be discussed and determined before moving forward, then you could always add something at that point into October.
You guys okay with that? Everyone on board with that?
So business meeting or consent agenda only, and then study session?
Consent agenda only, and then, and then study session.
I would also like to have a town hall before the levy, before we do our study session. That doesn't, maybe, maybe we just, maybe all the board members don't go or something, but better if they all did, but I think that'd be a good idea.
Well, that would be a meeting, wouldn't it?
Yeah, we'd have to, that would be a.
What's your idea of a town hall?
You know, you have a interaction back and forth, a little bit of questions, comments, concerns. We address them, we, you know, we have a discussion, a town hall discussion, where they can ask specific questions in regards to levy. And, and we can ask questions back and a little bit of a conversation with the community.
Similar to the three that we had this year? Because we did do three.
We did three town halls this year?
The levy information things.
Oh. Where people came and could ask questions, and we had all of the staff here.
So that's, yeah, because again, if we're all there, it's a meeting. So there's no, there's no way around that, because we're, because we're discussing just business.
Yeah, I understand that, yeah.
But it was staff that answered, staff and the levy committee that answered questions.
So we can, and I think it's a great idea, we can certainly have more town hall meetings after we, after we come up with our, or we can do it beforehand if you want to. Again, we just can't have more than two of us there, and staff would have to run the town hall.
And, and you, you can, I mean, however you guys want to do it, as long as it's posted as a board meeting, you know, I'm, that's, it's just, it's not that five of you can't get together and have a meeting. It's just that it has to be posted as a, as a meeting.
Yes, we have a town hall.
And so you can do it that way, or you can do it the way, you know, we did the information sessions last time. So I just, I, you know, and, and if you wanted to do it before, it would just be a matter of what, it would be different from, we had the plan, and then the, the things that we held, that board members came to, which was great, were the information sessions where this is the plan, and now we can ask, answer your questions and so forth. So if it's, that's the format, or if there's a different format.
Here's the thing, I guess my, I'm all for town halls, so I'm all for getting input from the, from the community. But having, opening it up to having the five of us having conversations with the community, I just don't see that going particularly well. And so I would rather have, have staff run that board meeting. We can certainly attend, certainly ask questions if a couple of us are there. But I just don't see opening it up, being five of us going back and forth with the community. I just, I'm not sure how that would come about. Because again, our, our goal as a board is to set the priorities. Here's what we're going to do with the levy. This is what we want to do, get a cohesive plan around that, and then present it to the community. Now, if we want to have, listen to them before we come up with that comprehensive plan, totally fine.
That's exactly what I'm suggesting before that, yeah.
Totally fine, but it's a, I just think it's more.
So, so.
Yeah, so I think we had to get our arms around that. Yes, sir.
So that, I don't know if this is going to be really popular, but we've, I guess if we do that, or we decide to do these town halls, or these levy information things, or anything we provide, I, I just, I want to encourage the community to attend these events, because we are doing these, and we are trying to provide more information. I attended two of the levy information events that we held, trying to disperse that information. And I think we had like three people in the community there.
One gentleman on the first one.
And then I attended, maybe a week ago, or two weeks ago, maybe, Ridgeview had a community night for, for the community to come and ask questions about the remodel, and going to Fruitland and all this stuff. And again, six, seven, maybe, community members there. So I want to ensure that we're engaging the community, and we're having these event, these, these things, and having that dialogue and disseminating information. But again, I also want to encourage the community to attend these events and come ask these questions, because it is a little difficult when you go and take time and to go to these events, and one person shows up, and there's 27 staff members, and three, two board members, and then one member of the community. And so it's like, so, again, I'm all for this. We need to have that transparency, but I'm asking, and I guess I'm asking the community, as these things are provided, please attend these events to make it worthwhile for everyone to get the correct information.
Absolutely.
Don't vote no, and not show up.
No, I think it's a, that's a very, totally agree with you. Again, I think it's just more about the, the way in which we present them. I think we want to make sure that, as we do this, once we come up with a plan, we want to speak with one voice. We make sure that we're, we're not going back and forth in our presentation to the public. And we want to make sure, again, to your point, we want to get their feedback, what works, what doesn't work, what are their concerns, what work, you know? Make sure we're, we're doing the right thing for all parties.
So I think that as, you know, the dis, we can put together listening sessions for the community that board members can attend, just like the, the ones. But we could do those prior to the study session. So then, and, and maybe some other sort of input processes. We're, we're having, you know, internal discussions about how do we get that input? And how do we, how do we share information and get input to help inform the plan? So we could have some of those things prior to the study session. Board members could attend those. And then, so it's not a board meeting, but they're informational sessions and listening sessions, but prior to the, you know, and then we can have more, more informational sessions, like we did this last round, once the levy plans, once the board votes on it, and, you know, we're out trying to provide information about the actual, what's on the levy and why.
And we can expand it, right? It doesn't have to be, we can maybe tell people it's more than just the levy, but just general feedback and questions and conversation. And, you know, maybe I'll just do it on my own, you know, or something.
Well, and that's something I think we talked about last time, like individual board members. You, you guys talked about stakeholders, and, and, you know, the board represents the whole community. And each of you as individuals has a, a group that maybe you're more connected to, right? And, and it's part of the board members, I mean, you can have coffee with those people, you can set up times to meet with those people. And, and that's part of what you do on that, you know, in terms of connecting with the community and listening to the community. So then you can bring that feedback to board dialogue and discussion. So absolutely.
I guess if I'm just going to kind of think out loud, you know, is, is, I kind of feel like I know exactly why it didn't pass, but I feel like maybe not everybody was listening. So maybe, I mean, yeah, I, I could talk to the people, people I know, and they would tell me the same things I kind of already know, you know, but.
So can I ask you, and you, you don't have to answer my question, obviously, but so, if that, if you, if you believe you know exactly why the levy didn't pass based on the conversations that you've had with your constituents, then I would think that would be super important for you to bring into the conversation of the study, of the study session that the, that the board has.
Yep.
That's informing the, you know, the levy plan and the informational campaign and all of those things. Because you've got that, if you have that information, that's, I mean, this, it's this kind of format where each board member should be sharing what they're hearing from different members of the community.
Yes, yes.
Okay, so we're good with changing that September 20th meeting to a study session for the.
For levy.
For levy.
And, and I haven't built in, because just because not exactly knowing what the, you know, what you all want the plan to be, we haven't built in, this is just a draft, like when the resolution would go and all that kind of thing. So it really depends on what you just hide out of the levy, out of the study session.
Sounds great. Okay, any other discussion around the 2223 board calendar?
With the understanding that it will be amended as we go.
Absolutely. So this is more just about the dates and format, and kind of those, you know, regular reports. This, the other thing I wanted to check with you on is, and if you look at this year's calendar, so look at the current one. Previously, the board had talked about July, the July meeting, which is July 27th, being a remote meeting. Now, with the OPMA update, that can still happen, but members of the community need to have the opportunity to attend in person. So if the board wants to kind of hold that remotely, what we could do is you all, as board members, could be remote. We would, staff would be here for the meeting. We had talked. would be here for the meeting, we had talked about it being a consent only agenda, so a real quick board meeting, and the purpose of this is to give you all a break.
Very nice of you.
And, and that's what the board had talked about, and, you know, many boards do this, some boards don't meet in July, but technically you're supposed to meet, you know, every month, so you could call in, you could all call in, we'll be here in person and in case anybody comes, but there wouldn't be public comment or anything, it would be posted as just a consent only, so it would essentially be you all getting the consent items, looking them over, and then-
Take a vote.
Take a vote, you could all be remote, we'll be in person, so we'll be meeting OPMA and anybody who wants to come in person for that is, is fine, do you still want to do that?
Yeah.
I have a question, do you have online programs for ALE?
It, it'll be a consent item, it's just the report that you typically get on consent with enrollment and numbers and things like that.
Yes.
Yeah, it's great.
So you want to keep doing that? Okay. Here, and so I, I built that same concept then into the, into the calendar for next year, that July would be a remote meeting for you, okay.
I need him unless he wants him.
All right.
Good.
Thank you.
You know who she likes, Ron.
Ron, if you look in your drawer, there's one from last time I put there for you this time.
Okay.
Okay, so we ready to move on to-
We're ready to move on, a little light reading here.
Okay, so you have all of these slides in your, in your packet, I just made copies of the slides, but I've also got them, you know, up, up here, so, the board requested that this topic be put on the retreat for discussion, so here, here's how I approached it, and I thought it would be good to start with a review of some information that, this was a topic, CRT wasn't a topic that was on the, excuse me, August 2021 board meeting, and so I wanted to bring back those slides and what was shared at that time, then what you won't see is any real deep dive into what is CRT and its concepts, so I did some research and, so I just have, I can share with you what I was able to learn in terms of definition of CRT and its concept, so I'll share that, I want to share information and updates also because it was, it was talked about in the August 2021 board presentation about cultural competency, diversity, equity and inclusion, or CCDEI, and social emotional learning, SEL, because why it got put on the August 2021 board meeting for discussion was, it was, it was around the time that Senate Bill 5044 was passed that requires training for staff, and so that some questions were coming up at that time, so I want to provide some information and updates about the status of that, and then I know some questions have come up around social studies, history, what are the standards, kind of what's the curriculum, so I've got a little bit there, and then I think, I, I think, and the board can do whatever you want, but I think in terms of, once we go through that, I think what might be a healthy and good conversation is, so based on all of this, what, what are the specific content and concepts that the board wants to make sure students are taught and, and not taught, so we can all be kind of really clear, speaking from the same, you know, plane about what, what it, what we're doing and not doing and what do we want to be doing and not doing, so I'll go through the information, you guys can take notes and everything, if you want to stop me from clar, for clarifying questions, please feel free, and then really the bulk of this though will be after I get done with my part, for you guys to have the conversation, okay, so I'm going to start with what we, what was shared in August of 2021, so this was, it, it was just a kind of a special report I was asked to put together, because we were getting questions about CRT and CCDEI and, and SEL, so I started out with just highlighting the fact that the board has authority and control, local control of curriculum, and then I also talked about what Senate Bill 5044 was all about and what was being said there, so this is just right out of the legislature and it highlights all the board, school, by law, right, district school director responsibilities, and one of the big responsibilities is to establish final curriculum standards consistent with law and rules of superintendent of public instruction, relevant to the particular needs of district students, et cetera, et cetera, ensuring quality education for every student, and to evaluate teaching materials, including textbooks, teaching aids, handouts or other printed material, in public hearing upon complaint by parents, guardians or custodians who consider dissemination of such material to students objectionable, so the board has authority and, you do, you approve curriculum before we adopt it and implement it, and then you have approval, you, you have final approval if there's a, a complaint about materials that have been adopted and are being used, board has the authority in public hearing to determine what to do about that, I also think it's really important to highlight what the constitution says, that our state constitution specifies that all schools maintained or supported wholly or in part by the public funds shall be forever free from sectarian control or influence, so this again is just right out of what was talked about before, like our schools are not to be places of, yeah, political or religious, they're neutral and they're intended to allow for the exploration of, you know, different ideas, including controversial topics, but not indoctrination into certain ways of believing, so at that time, again, we didn't go into any depth really about like what even is CRT, but, but I had stated and maintained in the, in the presentation that like CRT is not in our curriculum or our standards, we were getting questions specifically, and I will tell you, I know very little about this, so I, I don't know and I didn't really research it for this since we're not using it, but questions about, were we implementing the 1619 project or curriculum called the 1619 project, and we don't have that curriculum in this district and I really don't know anything about it, but I know that we aren't, we don't have it.
Good.
And then I also highlighted that there are, you know, board policies all connected with law governing the adoption of curriculum, and as Matt shared with you, you know, you just recently approved two curriculums, right, the world language curriculum and the comprehensive health curriculum, and, 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 and there was also a question that came up recently about a, a book, right, a, a literature book.
Anti-Racist Baby.
No, not, oh, that, well, that's coming up too.
There was an anthology.
Yeah, the, the book, the, the English book, remember?
Creative writers.
Thank you, okay, so, and at, at that time, right, Matt was able to highlight, yeah, we've got these policies in place and we're also looking at how do we kind of beef up some of these policies, most districts, and we're working on updating the policy to bring to you, have like an established sitting instructional materials committee that includes staff, high school students, parents, you know, different people, and in all of the supplemental materials and, and core textbooks, go through their process, but then it comes to the instructional materials committee and there's a formalized process for that group to approve recommending or not, and then it comes to the board, and so we need, we, we can beef up some of our processes a bit, and so more on that later, but our current policy specifies how curriculum gets adopted, and we do ensure participation of administrators, teachers and, and parents, and we've been, as you've seen with the last couple of adoptions, really beefing up our parent involvement processes with curriculum adoption, so we do have these guidelines and procedures that we follow, and we also have a, a process that we follow for when citizens express a concern and ask for something to no longer be an instructional material, and, and we do have, and, and it'll, it's on the board agenda for, for the next meeting, a public hearing, because it has to be done in public hearing, where the board is going to consider the decision regarding reconsideration of instructional committee, of instructional materials, so, and the, the complainant had spoken, I think the board meeting before last, so there has been a book that has been challenged and gone through the pro, the review process with the committee, who's, who makes a recommendation to me, I review that committee recommendation and make a decision, I issued that decision to the complainant and it's being appealed, and so that will come to the board in public hearing at the next board meeting. Okay, so again, I was just kind of highlighting what all of those processes were, this is again back in, back in August, we also, there's also a policy about controversial issues, and it says that the district shall offer courses of study which will afford learning experiences appropriate to the level of student understanding, instructional programs shall respect the right of students to face issues and to have free access to information, to study under teachers and situations free from prejudice, and to form, hold and express their own opinions, so as it's age appropriate, students may study controversial topics and be, you know, have the, the ability to study different viewpoints on those topics and, and, you know, come to their own kinds of conclusions with the goal of not indoctrinating them, not telling them this is the right way to believe, but this is, this X, whatever X is, is a controversial topic, it gets studied and they, it's the opportunity for them to see that there's different viewpoints on some of these topics, so we specify in policy that when those controversial issues or subjects are being studied, that it's done with thoroughness and objectivity to acquaint students with the need to recognize that there are opposing viewpoints and that it's not about putting a value of judgment on the conflicting opinions, and there's more kind of procedure that is specific to the teaching of controversial topics and guidelines, so that's just all in current policy, so that was part of that, and then we also just went over, so this was all kind of new, because this was just coming out in June of 2021, and again, these slides are from August of 2021, but Senate Bill 5044 had passed, and then Senate Bill 5044 says that every other year, districts must provide one professional learning day on cultural competency, diversity, equity and inclusion, or CCDEI training, and then the all, the next year is focused on SEL training, social emotional learning, this is training focused on staff, and now as the board knows, this training's not just for school staff, it's for boards, and you guys have recently been given information from WASDA about the board training requirement, because all of that's in the law now that this training's required for school staffs and board members and, you know, everybody kind of school related, again, it's adult focused training, so we showed kind of the calendar of what that looks like, and then I also highlighted that, you know, we do have very, there, I mean, we, there are very clear laws protecting individuals from, from discrimination and, you know, safe working environments, and so we're just highlighting, highlighting those as well, so this is just law, laws protecting individuals, shared a little bit of more kind of discrimination prohibition law that is in the law, and how that shows up in our board policy around non-discrimination, and then, and so it's just, you know, lots of words there, and it does say that we, you know, what, what all of those protected, protected classes are in the law, and that the district will provide training regarding their responsibility, and this isn't new policy, this is pretty longstanding policy, to eliminate bias, et cetera, and that we do have required training that all staff goes through at the beginning of the year, it's called safe schools, and these are all modules in safe schools, and you can see that some of them are about safety, things like bloodborne pathogens, and then some of them are around like responding to bullying, and there's one there about mid-screen on, you know, reviewing our discrimination and harassment policy, so anyway, this is all kind of required training for staff, so that, oh, the last part we talked about in June was kind of this whole, this equity, and what we mean by equity when we talk about equity here in KSD, we talked about how, for us, equity means focusing on success of all students, and how that's directly connected to our strategic goals for students, and how we look at each individual students and how they're experiencing our schools, that we look at, you know, student survey data, we look at student achievement data, and we do disaggregate and analyze data, and actually that was one of the things that you highlighted as a strength when we went through the board, strengths and weaknesses, that we do look at that disaggregated data because we want to see, for example, are boys experiencing, you know, less success in a particular area than our girls, I'll give you a real quick example of that in real life, one of our elementary schools, when I was out doing a visit recently, was sharing that based on their student survey data and kind of drilling into that and disaggregating that, one of the questions was, it has, I, I won't get it exactly right, but you'll remember, you've seen it enough, it's something about like, adults believe I can do good work, or something like that, and that there was a pretty marked difference between how girls responded and how boys responded, that the boys were responding a lot lower, and they're like, huh, that's interesting, and then they started to notice that all of their students of the month for the past several months had been girls, and it kind of just got them thinking about, are we, are we kind of maybe reinforcing or rewarding behavior that might be typ, more typical of, of, of girls than boys, and just got them thinking about, we need to make sure that we're also recognizing boys for the good work that they're doing, that's just a, a quick example of why disaggregating data is important, we went on to, to talk about like how we define educational equity, it's really about giving each individual student what they need, students come to us with different needs and in different places, and if we give every student the same support, that's not equitable, because some students need different support or more support, so for us, equity is about giving individual students what they need to be successful, recognizing that that's not always going to be exactly equal, another example of that is, you know, title one funding, that's how it comes to us, it comes to us dedicated to certain schools that have higher percentages of students receiving free or reduced lunch, higher levels of poverty, so there's more funding because the data shows, generally speaking, that students with higher levels of poverty have lower levels of achievement, again, I'm making generalizations, but, and that tho, that students, those students need more supports to be successful, not every student who's on, you know, but that's what we mean by equity, so I just wanted to, to share that, and then I want to go into, so what did I, so what, what's new and, and so tonight, like with this, with this whole conversation about CRT, I, I, I did, I tried to do research and really understand, and I think the best sort of definition of what it is is, is what I found on Britannica.com, and, and so I'll read it out loud, not because you need to be read to, but just to help think through it, so, so CRT, it says, is an intellectual and social movement and loosely organized framework of legal analysis based on the premise that race is not a natural biological grounded feature, but a socially constructed or invented category, so, and I'll pause in there, what I, what I take that to mean is that biologically, that there's, there's, there's one race, there's a human race, and that like, based on your skin color or culture, there's really no difference, and that race is something that human beings have, you know, created, I guess, to, because people have different skin colors and different cultural norms and things like that, and so that's all attributed to race, but really biologically, there's one human race, that there's not biological differences between race, it goes on to say that that, that that social construction of race is used to oppress and exploit people of color, again, I, right now what I'm doing is defining what I learned, what critical race theory is, and it's just, and so, critical race theorists hold that racism is inherent in the law and legal institutions of the US, and that those are, those systems are designed to kind of maintain social, economic and political inequalities between whites and non-whites, especially African Americans, based on this definition, critical race theorists are generally dedicated to applying their understanding that there's institutional, structural, or structural racism. or structural, or structural racism, and their goal is to eliminate race-based injustice and hierarchies. Okay. I don't claim that I understand everything I just read there. I'm just like trying to process myself as I'm trying to do some research on what, what actually is CRT by definition. The, it goes on. I also found a source from the American Bar Association because it talks about it being like a legal construct, that these are some of the key tenants of, of CRT. And I kind of spoke to the, the, the first one. So I think a, 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 a critical race theorist would say that race is not biologically real, but it's socially constructed. They would say that racism is a normal feature of society and embedded within systems. I think based on this definition from the American Bar Association, a, a critical race theorist would say that, again, it's not just like some people are racist. It's not just like a few people, like there's bad apples, but that there's racism kind of built into the system is what a critical race theorist would say.
Yep.
And, and I don't, I, I, I'll be honest, I don't understand what this last bullet says. I'm just going to be, I, I've kind of read it and try, and I don't really understand what that's exactly saying about the lives to scholarship.
I mean, I can tell you if you want to.
Yeah, well, we'll go back to it. Okay. So, so this is, when I, when I tried to understand for myself, so what are, what is the definition? What is CRT? This is what I could find that was just sort of factual. So what wouldn't come, again, I know the board's going to discuss all of this, but so I do want to just give a little update on the, the whole kind of CCDEI and SEL part. So that, that Senate bill is in place. What has happened since the last time this presentation is when the bill passed, the legislature told, gave, tasked WASDA and PESBEE. So WASDA, you guys all know WASDA is School Board Directors Association of the State. PESBEE is the Professional Educator Standards Board. So the legislature tasked PESBEE and WASDA with coming up with standards for CCDEI that should be part of professional development for staff members. Okay. And so, and it also, they said that PESBEE needed to collaborate with WASDA, that's B here, and, you know, align their standards of practice and so forth. So they were tasked with kind of fleshing out what, what kind of the standard should be for staff. So the definitions of CCDEI are in law in RCW. And so I think it's important as we're trying to define CRT, we also define CCDEI because I think they get kind of conflated in, in some ways potentially. So cultural competency includes knowledge of students' cultural histories and contexts, as well as family norms and values in different cultures, knowledge and skills and assessing, sorry, accessing community resources and community and parent outreach, and skills in adapting instruction to student experiences and identifying cultural contexts for individual students. So I think, I, I, I take that to mean that cultural competency for educators is about knowing that students come from different backgrounds and experiences and understanding your students so you can best serve your students. Diversity, I think they're just saying diversity just exists. Diversity is, it describes the presence of similar similarities and differences in groups, whether that's racial, ethnic differences, gender differences, disability status differences, age, religion, language, culture. So they're saying like diversity just exists. Equity, I think this definition, I think, aligns with our district definition of equity that we just went over in terms of providing kids with what they need. Because they say it includes developing, strengthening, and supporting procedural and outcome fairness at systems, procedures, and resource distribution to create equitable opportunities for all individuals and eliminating barriers that prevent full participation of individuals and groups. And then finally, inclusion describes intentional efforts and actions to create and sustain a sense of respect, belonging, safety, and attention to individual needs and backgrounds, and ensure the full access to engagement and participation in activities and opportunities. So that's how CCDEI is defined in law. PESBEE used those same exact definitions to, to flesh out, okay, these are the standards for educators. And then you can see that they kind of further said, again, this is for educators. They're saying educators should understand themselves and so they can better serve students across a big range of differences. There's a standard connected to student family and community engagement. I won't read all of this to you, but this is now PESBEE kind of further fleshing out, what are these, what are educators supposed to be learning so they can better serve students? So we do have those requirements. This next year is SEL. We did CCDEI last year. We really focused on belonging and creating, how do educators help to create and foster a, a environment of belonging? And this next year is SEL-focused. SEL, just real quickly, you guys just looked at this at the last board meeting because these are social emotional learning standards, just adopted that policy. And this is really about helping kids be more self-aware and socially aware. So you, we, I intentionally kind of made sure we looked at this last time because you guys were passing the board, or the SEL policy that we have to have. Okay? Okay. So the last part before it's board discussion and so forth is when it comes to like history and, and that kind of piece of this, like what are we teaching kids? What's the adopted curriculum? There are state civic standards and, and I've heard people, you know, recently talk about like, we should be teaching kids the Constitution and about all that. And we do. I mean, that is, that's, that is what we teach kids and that's what's in our curriculum. These are the state civic standards. So we teach social studies and history and, and we have standards and materials for all of those things. And then there's a, like a standalone civics requirement that focuses on these things. And then we actually, there's a state social studies scope and sequence that shows, so I wanted to show you this by grade level. What's the content and focus of, you know, when do kids learn US history and when do they learn US history and government and those kind of things? So this is like the history and social studies scope and sequence for our state. Okay. So as I did this research, I'll tell you what I believe. I, I believe that CCDEI is not CRT. I, I don't believe that the focus on that is CRT. I don't believe SEL is CRT. And, and I don't believe like teaching factual history, like kids learning about slavery and learning about Jim Crow laws and learning about things that happened in US history that are factual. I don't think that's CRT, based on what I learned. So what, what I think though is the board just needs to have a conversation and discussion about the information that I presented and, and maybe flesh out so we're all transparent and on the same page. If there are certain things where we do not want students to be taught, and I say that making sure that we're in alignment with the law because we've all taken an oath of office to uphold the law, are there things or concepts or things we're worried that students are being taught or will be taught and we want to make sure they're not? And what do we want to make sure the students are taught? I mean, I, I mentioned and I'm talking for myself now, like factual history. I think that's important that students are taught that. And I think it aligns with what the state standards are. So I just want to, I, because I think we, this will be a good conversation so there's clarity. Okay. So I don't, I don't know how you want to start. I think it's important that we hear from each individual board member though. I, I really do.
Yes, sir. If you don't mind, I'll go first since I asked to have this put on the, the agenda. And I spent some time, I spent some time researching this and, and doing some of that as well. And interestingly enough, you and I both pulled Britannica's definition. So we're, we're on the same page there. But I wrote some of this stuff out because I wanted to make sure that as I go through it, I'm speaking to, to what I want to share and giving everybody the, the information. So I want to start by adding one other definition to critical race theory. This is from Brookings.edu. I will say Brookings is an institution that is the most frequently cited think tank by US media and politicians, and it scores a 53 on a scale of one through 100 in terms of where they rank on conservative and liberal. So it's not a conservative or a liberal definition necessarily or, or institution. Simply put, critical race theory states that US social institutions, i.e. the criminal justice system, education system, labor market, housing market, and healthcare systems are laced with racism, embedded in laws, regulations, rules, and procedures that lead to differential outcomes by race. So to me, with that particular definition and the definition that Dr. Pierce shared, I would say that CRT makes race the lens that we look through for all aspects of American life. And to me, it also shows that what they're saying is that America at its core is fundamentally racist as well. I think many will argue that CRT is a class in a law program and it's not taught in our schools. And, and you just shared with us that it, that it's not. I, I would agree that critical race theory is not going to be in our curriculums. It's not going to be in our, our syllabus or syllabes as well. My concern are the principles and tenants of critical race theory, and I think as well as some members of our community. Those are our concerns that the principles and tenants are being taught in our school. I believe that any school or staff that is teaching core principles around CRT like whiteness, systemic racism, white privilege, individuals being an oppressor or a victim, encouraging discrimination or discrimination practices systematically, and also whether America is systematically racist and being dismantled to me is practicing CRT and its principles in our classroom. So with that, do we have critical race theory principles or tenants in our classrooms? We heard here tonight, no. I will share with you a few different examples, which I think show that they are. And, and hopefully we can, we can kind of talk through this. We have a teacher's book club at Kennewick High School. I'm going to quote their email. This email invite is to follow up on our professional development book study initiated earlier this spring. We just finished reading White Fragility: Why It's So Hard For White People To Talk About Race by Robin D'Angelo. After many long, hard, and important conversations, we have decided to continue meeting on our weekly basis to continue to discuss how we can be better educators for our Black, Indigenous, and students of color. Up next on our reading list is Anti, is How To Be, or Anti-Racist by Ibram X. Kendi. And this, this email is, is from during COVID time. The next email from the book club states, "Our next book is Street Data. We will be meeting on Tuesdays at lunch to discuss each reading and how we apply it at Kennewick High." So I'll say that again. Discuss each reading and apply it to Kennewick High. So what are in these readings? So I've, I've got a couple quotes here from, from these books. How to Be An Anti-Racist from Ibram X. Kendi, one of the books in the book club. The claim of not racist neutrality is a mask for racism. So essentially, if you were to say, I'm not racist, you're masking your racism.
And Tracy, this is actually, when you said you didn't understand the, the fourth point, this is, this is what it is.
The, the next quote from this book, "The only remedy to racist discrimination is anti-racist discrimination. The only remedy to past discrimination is present discrimination. The only remedy to present discrimination is future discrimination." Is that applied? I don't know. It says right here in the email, "We're going to discuss how we can be better educators for our Black, Indigenous, and students of color." I, I'm thinking, as a teacher, you want to be a better educator for everyone, not specific groups. Are we discriminating based on what we said up there? Potentially, right? There's also a teacher, or excuse me, let me go back to these, this other book. White Fragility. White identity is inherently racist. White people do not exist outside the system of white supremacy. White people raised in Western society are conditioned into a white supremacist worldview because it's the bedrock of our society and it's our institutions. Street Data, this was the third book that was discussed. Street Data says systematic racism includes a complex array of anti-black practices, the unjustly gained political, economic power of whites, the continuing economic and other resource inequalities along racial lines, and the white racist ideologies and attitudes created to maintain and rationalize white privilege and power. The core concepts for chapter one of this book, for fluency, are white supremacy, settler colonialism, intersectionality, and implicit bias. This book also references both Robin D'Angelo's book and Ibram Kendi's book. This book also has a reference to white supremacy over 17 times. So how are we applying these principles in these books at Kennewick High? I guess you'd be the judge. There's a teacher at Kamikin who shared a meme that shows a house burning down and states, "Noneducators arguing about CRT bans. Veteran teachers planning to teach that shit anyway." The teacher also writes on this post, "Oh, yeah." So here, here's the Facebook post shared by this teacher, all but confirming to me that this teacher is planning to teach CRT.
Could you read that out loud because the people can't see what you just held up?
Yeah, absolutely.
Thanks.
"Noneducators arguing about CRT bans. Veteran teachers planning to teach that shit either way."
And those are noneducators that said that?
Yeah. No, this is a teacher. This is a teacher at Kamikin who shared this.
But she, was that in the classroom she shared that?
No.
Okay.
No. This, this same teacher who shared this, there's reports from students that this so-called this teacher shared with their class that the school board has approved them to teach CRT in their class. Should we ask the students? We probably could, I, I think, just to verify. There's two KSD teachers who've signed on the ZIN project pledge in the last year. The ZIN project pledge, the goal is to introduce students to a more, what they call, accurate, complex, and engaging understanding of United States history that is outside of what is found in traditional textbooks and curriculum. They simply offer teachers alternative to teach outside of the textbooks. In the summer, in last summer, the ZIN project also organized pro-CRT rallies in 22 cities across the, the country.
Can you interrupt me real quick?
Yeah.
Z-I-N-N.
Z-I-N-N. Yep. So we must prioritize excellence, hard work, high standards. We need to inspire our students regardless of racial background, that they can achieve anything with hard work. Teachers should be teaching about equality for all. We should teach history impartially with non-politicized curriculum or without personal bias. CRT principles and concepts do not belong in our classrooms. We must strive for diversity without division. And so with that being said, that's what I have to share, but I'll also would like to add that, once we have this discussion and we get to the next meeting, I would love to introduce a, a resolution or a motion so that we can move forward on this. We can take a stand and go whichever way, and then we can move on from this topic. So in the sake of transparency for everyone online and everyone here, that.
To be clear, to pass a CRT resolution.
Correct.
Yes. Which is drafted up.
Correct. Thanks, Mike.
Yes, sir. Got a lot laid out there. So you guys have questions?
Obviously I'm going to have some questions and some comments. And number one comment, Gabe, is CRT in our classroom, fact. I want to know if the facts, you just gave me some theories and not to attack what you said because what you said is what you feel. I totally respect that. But what we hear and what I also agreed to this meeting and begged for this meeting is to get it out clear, transparently. Is CRT factually, not theoretically, not a theory, not something you pulled out of something? Is it a fact that CRT has been taught in the Kennewick School District?
I would argue yes. Specifically, we have, we have a teacher here telling us that they're teaching it. So, so yes, I'm taking the teacher at their word that yes, they are teaching CRT in their class.
Okay. I pointedly asked you, was that said in the classroom? And your answer was no. So we have to deal with facts. So if there's someone out there who recorded this teacher saying that or is willing to stand in front of the school board and say, yes, on December 1st, 2020, the teacher stood there at nine o'clock and said what you just said. Because if it's not, we, we, it's sort of what you said before, we are attacking a thought, a theory. We, we, we can't, if there's no problem, why are we going to make a policy against something that's not happening?
Can I ask, can I ask you a question, Ron?
I'm asking Gabe right now. Just when Gabe is finished, I'll give you that chance. And I'm not being rude, but I really want to hear what you're saying.
Yeah. So you asked for people, you asked last meeting for instances of critical race theory, right?
Proof, yes.
To me, that is proof. I'm taking the teacher at their word that they are teaching it based on what they are sharing. Have I gone in and surveyed the students in that class? No, I haven't. Can we? We, we probably could ask and have them do it. Do we think those, do we think those kids are going to come up and say, yes, this teacher did it? I, I don't know because I mean.
Have teachers signed their name on the ZIN project?
I don't know.
Did a teacher in the email, in the email say he wanted to teach those things and apply them in the school?
Did he do it? That's the fact I want to know.
He said he wanted to.
I, no, that's not proof. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Mike. I want to know, did it occur? I can say I'm going to go J-Walk, but if I don't J-Walk, I haven't broken the law.
Right. Can I ask you a question?
You can now.
Do you want CRT taught in the schools?
Do I want, I want the students to know what it's about, just like we just talked about it. I don't want that, I don't want anyone told that they're not worthy or, or I don't want anyone to may feel bad. Because I've been made feel bad. I know how that feels. I've been told that on mass. I don't want that, I don't want any kid to go through that. I don't care.
So we agree that we don't want it taught in the.
I don't want anyone to, I, I want the kids to know what is being said about this theory. I don't want them ignorant about this theory. I want the facts put out there that this is not being taught in schools. This has been taught in law schools, universities, and what the theory is all about. But as far as the principles that you had just espounded upon, no, I don't want any kid to go through that. I don't want anyone to hear what's on that paper. I don't want, and that's what I'm saying. If it is, we as a school board should act upon it. If we have the fact, if we know that teacher did that, that's something that we can take that teacher and go to the teacher and say, on, on a certain date, certain time, certain place, you did this. And you, that is not within the lines of the principles that we said. We just discussed.
So if a teacher discloses an intent to teach.
Haven't broken the law until they do it.
And, and real quick, I, I've been, I've tried to, I'm being very careful with not trying to name anyone. And I'm happy to talk to Tracy about this and who, and she can look into that if Mike's fine with that. My, my thing is, is, so we're saying it's not taught in the district. We have five teachers here, three from a book club and two that signed onto this project to discuss this and apply these principles. I mean, I, I can't go in and sit in their classrooms. They're not going to discuss this with, with any of us sitting in there. So grabbing the proof outside of, I guess the students coming in and saying it's being taught. I mean, sure, we can, we can do that. I just.
Let me address the book club, if you don't mind.
Sure.
If you're part of a book club, you read the book and then you discuss the contents of the book. Doesn't mean that you always agree with what's in the book, but you talk about the book. You said, "Chapter one, they did this. Chapter two," and went on and on. It does not mean that you're going to take that to the classroom. Maybe you eliminate it. You say, "From this book, we can't say what was in chapter two." So just because you sat down and discussed and read a book and talked about it at a book club does not mean it's going to dictate policy. And until they do that, you can't, it's a book club. You can't, just because you read Harper Lee's.
You did not accurately describe what the teacher said, though.
I didn't describe anything. I, I, I would just, I'm sorry. Let me give you a chance.
You described the teacher as, as presenting two ideas and then not really applying. That's not what he said.
I'm sorry.
He said, can Ron maybe read what he said about applying those theories?
"We will be meeting on Tuesdays at lunch to discuss each reading and apply it to Kennewick High."
To discuss each reading. And if, so that doesn't mean everything they're going to read is going to be applied to Kennewick High. They're going to take out things that they feel is good and relevant to Kennewick High. And going to, and, and yet still, we don't have any proof that that happened.
Ron, can I ask you a question, another question?
You can.
So a minute, maybe an hour ago, we talked about preparation.
Yes.
You said that we need to prepare.
For emergencies, yes.
Emergencies and prepared. Diane, you said the same thing, we need to prepare?
Yes.
You also said you didn't want CRT taught in the, in the school. Okay, so.
The principles of CRT.
Yep. Okay, the principles of CRT. So I feel like now maybe you're saying a little bit like, we can't, like, I can't prove there's going to be a fire that's going to happen, I, you know, but you wanted to prepare for that anyway.
Emergencies, yes.
Okay, emergencies, yes. I think this is, is it, can this not be an emergency if we're teaching our kids what, the stuff that you said you don't want to hear? You don't want the kids to learn that stuff, right? So can we make a policy stating that, hey, we both agree, we don't want it taught? Let's make a policy that says you're not allowed to teach this.
Okay. You know, it surprised me how we put this on the school order of things because we have some other theories. So if we put it in that we don't want theories, unsustainable, you know, theories, if we don't want to put them in generally, in general, yeah, I would, I would consider that. But to take this one theory and focus on it is, is, is eliminating the others, the big picture. Like what I told you, the preparation, I didn't just say, let's prepare for fire. I'm talking about the whole things that could happen to our kids. So these theories, there are other theories out there that's damaging to all kids, other kids. And let's take all those theories, capture them in your policy that you want to come up with, our policy at the time if we all approve it. Let's capture them all. Let's say that we're not going to do any theories that's going to be harmful if for any kid. Not just the, 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 the work that you've done here. I have some other theories that I'll tell you about in the next section. Kids should never be a part of. They shouldn't hear it. So let's.
Should teachers be objective?
Describe. I don't, I'm not quite sure what you mean.
Should teachers be objective? Should they teach things without their political bias?
Oh, absolutely.
Do you feel like those teachers are being, are objective teachers?
They haven't taught anything. You haven't proved anything. How do you know?
I don't, I mean.
That's right. You don't know. We don't know.
I know their intent. I know their intent.
You don't, you don't know.
He said his intent. He said, "I plan to discuss this so that we can apply it into our school."
Discuss it. Maybe the.
So that we, you keep forgetting the last part. You keep forgetting the last part.
Okay. Maybe the, maybe the decision from that group is that this is horrible. We would never teach this to our kids.
So why would you want to apply it?
That's the application. The application is that this is horrible. We would never do it to our kids. That's how we're going to apply it. We're not going to apply it because it's so bad.
Do you feel like that's what he was, what he meant?
I don't know these folks.
You're asking, you're asking hypothetically.
I, I think we're, I think we're all in agreement that we don't want this in, in our classrooms, right?
You can use that. You can use that terminology, but you can't put it in my mouth. What I'm saying, I don't want any theories, don't name it. I don't want any theories that some, someone came up with, seat of the pants, and then we're going to teach it in our classroom. I think we have to go back to what we've, we said before, what's important to us, our, our guiding principles for Kennewick School District, the approved curriculum that we've had our community part of. That's what we teach at Kennewick School District. And that's the proof that we have right now. It's being taught. This other stuff is horrible. What you just said is horrible. But we have no proof that it's been said at any Kennewick classroom.
All we have is, is many students and parents saying it. Now that, I didn't hear it. I mean, they said it. They said that it's being taught in some cases. Now, is that hard evidence? No, it's not. Was that in the class when they taught it? No. I think that I can kind of assume an intent. And then when I listen to that intent and I listen to the students say, yes, he is teaching this or she is teaching this, then I put those two things together and it makes me kind of feel like, well, he's saying this, they're saying this, those two things match.
That's good. That's good because that's what makes us strong. You have that point of view. Diane has a point of view. Gabe, we all have points of view. We share that point of view. And then we decide, if, if everybody here says that's enough evidence, we need to go and talk to that teacher, then we do it. My whole point here is that, yes, we need to take action to keep that kind of stuff out of the classroom. But we can't just look at that one thing and say CRT is bad. Okay, we got that principle written down. Okay, now we can go on to everything else. Because no, there are other principles out there. There's, there are other theories out there that we need to address in an open document. I'm, I'm not saying don't create your document. I'm saying don't focus on one conspiracy theory.
I, I think that's the, that's the thing right there. You call it a conspiracy theory. Some of us don't. I take the teacher's intent based on this, that they're doing, that they're doing it. And, and there's a, there's other background to it that is not for.
We're trying to keep, we're trying to keep certain people out of it, but.
So I, I guess ultimately, I, I don't want CRT principles or tenants in the school. I feel like I have the evidence that it's in, in our district. I know you don't. I think that's why we move forward and like I said, I, I, like I said, I'm ready to move past this, this discussion with CRT and that. I'd like to just get it on the record. Let's, let's look at a resolution to your point. If it passes, it passes. If it doesn't, it doesn't, but we're done and we move forward. And maybe we can address some of these other theories I think we're going to do tonight, but I have no clue what we're going to discuss because we didn't get any additional theories to find out what we're going to discuss. So I, I'm focused right here and, and I want to get this discussion done. We move on as a board and we, we address the other stuff that we need to.
Okay, so real quick, Tracy, you had a, you had a comment?
I, I do, but I think perhaps it is, I don't know if it, if it goes, what Dr. Pierce is going to talk about. But we talked before about the evaluation of teachers, principals, and other staff members by the board or whoever, or not the board, excuse me, the superintendent or whoever their evaluator is. And so if a teacher is teaching anything that is not a part of the curriculum or is not appropriate, and a parent, a student, another staff member, whomever hears that, actually, you know, experiences that, they go to whoever that person's supervisor is, that person's supervisor talks to them, to that staff member on the line. We, we have a process in place for whatever it may be that would be not appropriately connected to the curriculum. We talked about taking out with the comprehensive sexual health. We talked about taking out parts of that so that students whose parents did not want them to experience that. So we have processes in place to talk to people when they are not following curriculum. I have concerns again about, sort of to what Ron was speaking about, being very specific about one particular thing when we have a broad process already in place to deal with things that are done that are not a part of the general curriculum.
So, so I, I'm grappling a little bit with the teacher book club versus like what teachers are reading and discussing as adults and as educators versus what they're teaching in their classroom. Because I think there's, there's a difference. And I understand what you read, what, what was said. And, and kind of to, to what I think Mr. Mayberry was saying. I guess it, so if teachers are reading books and, and discussing those books and saying, how do, you know, is there something here that we can learn from or consider or not that would help us serve our kids better as we teach the adopted English curriculum? As we teach the adopted history curriculum? As we teach the adopted PE curriculum? I think we just have to differentiate between, between that. Because on the, on the CCDEI side of things, educators are supposed to be learning about how to be culturally responsive, knowing that there's diversity in their classrooms, so forth. It's like there's a difference between, and I'm not, I don't know, I haven't read those books. But I just also just want to differentiate, teachers might have a book study about something that doesn't necessarily mean, and I don't know, that they've taken what they've learned that's about like pedagogy or something, about how to teach and how to connect with kids, which I don't know if that's what that's about. And it doesn't mean that they're teaching that to kids. They are teaching the adopted curriculum. They should be. So, so there's, I don't, I don't know if you can say, because the teachers read these books. No, and just let me finish. And I, that's why I want to get super specific because it's going to be very difficult for us as an organization to, to tell teachers what they can or can't teach if we're not really specific about what is, what is it? Like, I don't think, I mean, and, you know, I mean, are we, are we saying we're going to tell teachers what they can and can't read? Or is this about what teachers can and can't teach in, in their classroom? Because, and that's where I was trying to go. It's like if you can say, and if we, if the board, if there's a, a concept, a principle, an ideology, if, if teachers were teaching an ideology to kids saying that because you're white, you're bad. That should not be something we should be teaching to kids. And so if we can be specific about that, then we can develop, the board can develop a policy or a whatever saying that, and then we can hold people accountable to it. That's where I'm trying to kind of ferret out at that level of specificity. And maybe some of the draft resolution or something includes some of that.
I, I just want to add to, because you, you mentioned the book club. So are they applying it? I, I don't know. They're, they're reading these books so they can be better educators for just our, our Black, Indigenous, and students of color. So are we discriminating, are they discriminating against our, our white students because they don't want to be better educators for those students? Or I guess, I guess that's what I'm trying to determine too, so.
If I'm a teacher and I say, "I've got a gun," and I, and let's talk about how we can, how I can use this gun on students, what would you do? Would you take that seriously?
Yes, if they said in the classroom and there's proof that he said it.
If I said in an email to others, other teachers, hey, let's have, let's, let's practice shooting this gun. And then let's, and then let's talk about how we can use these, how we can use these guns in the classroom. You would say, okay, that's intent. We gotta, we gotta do something about that. The teachers had the same thing about CRT. But we say, well, you know.
So right now, we don't have a, we don't, there's no board policy or anything. I'm, I'm just saying this whole thing of CRT is kind of coming up. Right now, I can't point to a board policy to say, to say to those teachers, what you just did is a violation of board policy.
That's why we'd like to make one.
Right? So you're using a gun example. We have law and policy about guns. So yes, if a teacher said, "We're going to," what you just said, I'm not even going to repeat it. Of course, we, that's a clear violation of law and policy.
Because of intent and the policy.
And illegal because of, yeah, because of, we have policy in place stating.
So what I'm trying to understand is if we're going to tell educators, these are what the rules are and you have to follow these rules, we have to be very clear about, I believe the board needs to be very clear about what it is. When you say it, if we, you can't just say, "Don't teach CRT." What is it? What exactly don't, right? That's what I'm trying to get at. What do we want? Because some people will interpret that to say, well, then we're not supposed to teach history anymore. We're not supposed to teach about.
CRT is not history.
I know that, which is why, I mean, based on my research, but there is such right now in my lack of specificity. in my lack of specificity about what, when, when people say CRT, what does that mean?
Can we read the resolution?
Hold on, let's, let's...
I think what we're trying to do tonight is, what I was tasked with doing is to try to get some information and also, I think, deconflate these concepts of CRT and CCDEI and equity. Because also, there's, I, there's people who believe when we say the word equity, that's CRT. When you say cultural competency, that's CRT. I don't believe that that is CRT. I, I don't believe that's anything in the definition. So, if we're not really clear, we're also gonna think, people are gonna interpret this in all kinds of ways that I don't think would be the board's intent. So, that's where I think the conver, what exactly, right? And that's where I was trying to kind of help guide the conversation. What exactly are those things? And you mentioned a couple of them. If, if there's, if there is a teacher teaching their class that because of the color of your skin, you are less than others, or you're, you're a bad person, or you're racist, or you're whatever, that's not acceptable.
That teacher needs to be fired.
So, but, and, we should be specific about that. That's what, if that's what we're saying CRT is, then we should say, that's what CRT is, and that's what you're not allowed to do.
So, should we define it?
That's what I'm trying to help us do, from your perspective, because it, yeah.
So, in the resolution, it, it defines it.
But your resolution...
But the board hasn't discussed this. I know that some board members have, have had the conversation and discussion. This is the board's opportunity to further flesh out this conversation. So, potentially, it could lead to something like that if that's what the board decides to do.
And I think that this, your idea of what CRT means and every other person in this room is most likely going to have some variation. Some may be widely varied, some may be very close. So, that's the thing. What is it? How do you, how do you mitigate legislate against something that not everybody will have the same wording for?
You want me to add to this, Ron? Do we wanna move to that? Sure. Do you want me to throw stuff up there so we can get moving along? Okay. Uh, let's see, want students to be taught...
Why don't I go ahead and take the notes up here so we can see them? And then the board can talk about, and other, everybody can contribute to the...
I guess, I'm sorry for my frustration, but I keep, the reason I get frustrated is because I keep saying, let's define it. We have a document that defines it. Everybody says, well, we need to define it. We have different definitions. And I say, well, we have a document that we'd like to show you that defines it. Yeah, but we need to define it, Mike, and we need to come to agreement with it. Everybody has different definitions. I know. So, let's define it. Yeah, but we need to define it. Isn't that what we're just in for the last five minutes? I don't understand, like...
You defined it. We need to define it.
I agree. A hundred percent agree.
That's it. That's the, that's the circle we have.
Dr. Pierce, I'll see Bronson Brown with us tonight, but I'd also like his input on this, please. Or Mike, I should say that too. Mr. President, could we please have Bronson's input?
Well, let's, yeah, let's, let's go through this exercise here first, then we'll, we'll see where it leads us. But yeah, we would definitely need legal, legal opinion before we do anything.
That's, that's interesting, because is it a legal issue? Is it a legal document?
My concern is that when you, when you decide what something is, you know, is that really what it is? I mean, the five of us could agree. We could say that's what it is. But legally, legally...
That would be, if, if the five of us agree, that would be the Kennewood School District's point of view.
Policy, correct.
It wouldn't be anything legal. I don't mind being Bronson in, but...
No, but I'm just saying, if we did, let's say we did, we all agreed, and that is now our policy. That doesn't mean that policy speaks to legal, right? It, it could be wrong.
Exactly. And that's the big issue, that you bring in your legal to make sure that, that, that we're covered, that we're not doing something blatantly illegal.
Correct.
Because that's the last thing we wanna do.
Ready? Okay, I'll start with don't want to be taught. I do know any of the students taught that the United States is fundamentally or systematically racist. I do not want this, I don't, do not want students taught that race determines their moral character and make, and makes them responsible for pre, past transgressions of, of their race. By doing this, will in turn just cause further discrimination. So, a person's race, a person's race determines their moral character and makes them responsible for past transgressions of that race.
Or a person's race does not.
Does not, yes.
Yeah, does not.
You don't want this to be taught.
Correct.
Yes, I do know what students taught that their race de- determine, essentially, it makes them responsible for past transgressions of their race. Lastly, I do not want students taught, uh, let's see. I do not want students, and maybe it's up there, students taught that members of any particular race are inherently racist or oppressors or victims. Yeah. Um, so, what do you have? Members of any particular race are inherently racist. What do you have up there? Sorry.
You said or victims.
Members of a particular race are inherently racist.
So, it should be...
Or, yeah.
Oppresses or oppressed.
Yeah, oppressed, yeah.
And then...
Yes, sorry, my, my eyes can...
Yeah.
And then Tracy, for a particular race, it should be are, not or.
Diane, you're probably a great teacher.
I am a very good teacher.
I believe it.
I guess I'll add that I want students taught history from a non-politicized or biased, or without personal bias. Yeah, sure. From a non-political or personal bias stance.
I don't want...
He, he does...
I'm sorry, go ahead.
He does want.
Oh. I'm adding, I'm adding now to the don't want. Oh. I don't want anyone's past to be devalued or not taught. I do not want anyone's history to be omitted or not taught. And, and not valued.
It's a good one, Ron.
Yeah, maybe, yeah, right, yeah. And I might have said poorly, sorry. I don't want that those were the good old days taught. I don't want it taught that you're superior because you were born in the USA. Let me be, let me be clear with this. I signed on a dotted line to give my life to this country, and I love this country. So, I don't want anyone to think that I'm anti-USA because I said that. I just don't want anyone to think, just because you're born here, you're superior. You can be born somewhere else, come here and become a citizen and be just as valuable as anyone else in the United States. I just wanna add that clarity, because I don't want anyone to think I'm not proud of this country. Because I am very much so. I don't want it taught that racism does not, and I hope I'm using it right, do not exist in the United States.
Can we, can we define that a little further? Because I think, because I think racism, there's an individual aspect of it, and then there's a systematic aspect of it. And individually, I think it certainly does exist. Systematically is the question.
Okay, good, good, good point. I know, and, and don't, don't type this in. I don't want it to be bad to discuss that in a classroom so that kids can learn just what you said. So, I don't want the subject of racism to be totally eliminated in our curriculum. It exists and we should learn, people should learn about it. Our kids would be better if they're educated about it, any point of view. Like, we had that, that topic before where we talked about controversial studies. That should include studies about race. It exists. We need to prepare our kids for it. Either way.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with that, as long as it's not taught that there's a systematic racism.
It should be talked about, not taught.
Not taught, right. Not, not taught as, as if that's doctrine.
But there's no way, even, I brought my little copy, well-worn copy of the Constitution.
Oh, great.
These topics exist in the Constitution.
Yeah.
Amendments were made because of racism. So, we need to be able to talk about it so we don't repeat.
I agree.
In the past, so...
I agree. And I just wanna be clear that, that everybody, there's so many people who send emails or talk to me, and they talk about history being taught as if that's CRT. That is, that is not the same thing. History and CRT are different. CRT, I can, is, is an action. It's, it's, it's literally tearing down the, the fundamental society of the United States in order to change it, you know, it's, you know, that, that's what, that's what CRT does. The actions of CRT tear down the, the framework, the Judeo-Christian values of the Western society in order to turn it over, right? So...
No, not right. It's not right, because CRT...
That's not what CRT is?
Where's the practice? Where's CRT practice? Where, where is that enacted? Where do you see that in place?
So, every, every single coun, every single country essentially that has came out of, that's implemented some form of Marxism is, is, is important, is implementing some sort of race theory or critical theory.
So, we don't have it here, and again, Kennewood, and in Kennewood School District, that's not implemented.
Well, you don't know that.
And you don't even.
Right. We, we just, we just have circumstantial evidence.
I think Gabe said it right. We moved past that point, and we're gonna put on what not to be taught. And, and right now, I'm sharing that. And, and, and I, I don't mean to be rude. I just wanna stay on this focus. I think we're, we're on a good track towards getting out of here and, and getting our point across and getting something productive out of it. So, I'm gonna continue. And then what I wanna be taught is that every person counts. Every, especially, that's just breaking it. Every student counts. Every student counts in our school, in Kennewood School District.
Yeah, and has no limit to their success and their skin color. Nothing to do with their, their ability to succeed.
Yeah, that's good, Anne.
Yeah. Your skin, your pigment in your skin has nothing to do with the, your, your ability to succeed or your, or how smart you are, or how hard you can work. Has nothing to do with it.
I want it to be taught that you can improve. I want it to be taught that, it's sort of what's been said before, I know, we're hard work.
Self-determination.
And self-realization that you can succeed.
And I would even say, Ron, thank you for your service. You could, we can succeed because we live in this great country.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, this country is set up for everybody to succeed, and that's the beauty of it, right?
Given that everyone has an opportunity to succeed, equitable opportunity to succeed. That's a great thing you just said.
Yeah, so I would, I would really like to make the distinction between equity and equality of opportunity. I'm a strong believer in equality of opportunity. I think that that's our job to provide the, that equality of opportunity to everybody. But equality of outcome is different, right? And that's, equality of outcome is really not achievable. But equality of opportunity is achievable, and that's really what our goal should be.
I, I, I would change equality to equitable, because not everything is equal.
Well, I'm, I'm, but I'm saying equality of opportunity.
Even the opportunity. I may need to dig up deeper than the person that's already...
You think equity of opportunity?
Equity of...
What does that mean?
That means that, hey, if you have to spend so much time helping me, let's say I'm, I'm down here, I'm just using terms that's probably not right. But let's say if I'm down in my luck, right? I didn't get a chance to finish school, right? But I, now I have a drug. I've approached you, say, hey, Gabe, I really wanna make it. I wanna go into the military, but I need a degree or what have you. You can spend amount of time helping that person if you're convinced that's the true. Whereas this person up here is about to go to Navy ROTC. That person needs just a letter of recommendation in their garden, but you spend time on it, equitable time. This time here may not be equal, but it's equitable because you're gonna spend a couple of days, couple of months, years to get this person so they can pass a GRD to get into the military. Equitable because you focused on both of them. Equality would have been said, you get 10 minutes, you get 10 minutes. That 10 minutes for him is gonna be different from this 10 minutes for her.
Right, but I'm not talking about equality versus equity.
But I, you almost can't say the two without...
I'm, I'm talking about equality of opportunity. We give everybody the equal opportunity to succeed. So, they start from the same starting line.
And they don't. That's what I was just showing you.
I know they do, but that's our job to provide, to, to, to push, to push for that so they can, so they can all start from the same starting line. That's what equality of opportunity is, is it's giving them the equal opportunity, an opportunity to all start from the same place.
How do you get them to the same place?
Well, that's a different discussion. But, but I'm saying the goal is to, to get them so they're all at the same starting line. That should be our goal. That's equality. It's equal opportunity. The opportunity is equal. Equity is something different. That's what you're describing, right? You're describing different times and different resources to apply to different children in different ways. That's how you achieve. That's a means to the end. The end is equality of opportunity. The equity is, is a means to provide, to achieve that.
I get how Grinch did that, but you can't say one without the other.
Realization.
Thank you, because I wouldn't have been able to come up with that again.
Diane, do you have any thoughts? You can reply over there.
Go ahead.
Keep thinking, Diane. Pride. Every student should have pride and no one should be allowed to... I have these words in my head that are not coming out, to, to diminish that pride, to... When you put someone down...
Self-worth, yeah, that's a good word.
And I don't know how to capture it. I'm so sorry, man. But it's just, let, let's, I'll give you an example, I think. If, if, let's say, in this, a personal example. I was asked one night when I was in school, what are you gonna have for dinner? I grew up on a farm. I honestly said, we're gonna have steak, because it was fall of the year and it was butcher time when we had steak. The teacher said, yeah, right. You're not gonna have steak. What are you really gonna have? And it made me feel like dirt, like...
Crap.
I cannot have steak, you know, and I was just a young kid when that happened to me. And so, I don't want a kid to feel through the actions of others or a leader, a teacher, or what have you, that you're, you're net worth. You are your net worth or your perceived...
I get what you're saying. I think that's, that's good.
Your, your economic status should not relate to your value in the classroom. And, and I think I've said mine too simply. Thank you. I, I show you, I give you guys an example how that happened, unexpect, unintentionally. That was a program at a school district. I don't think it was here. But if you were... But if you were free and reduced lunch, you wore this patch or something on your clothing to, so you would.
Scarlet letter, yeah.
Yes. So that the officials would know that you were free and redundant. Why do we need, do you know how that would make you feel if you're walking around there? So, but unintentionally, so I think that's, if we have to say, we have to be clear that our intentions are not going to lead to that kind of thing. Sorry, Diane.
It's okay. No, thank you. And I was listening so intently, part of what I was thinking went out of my mind. One of the things I would like our students to be taught is that, I guess I'm struggling for the right word, that teachers and staff will provide them, you know, factual history, whatever the work is, whether it's in science, English, PE, math, whatever, but that student commitment to work, to complete that work, needs to be their responsibility. To complete work and turn it in, or however you want to word that. Be their, be the student's responsibility. Because I believe I was talking about the amazing shake that we did on Monday. And I call those hashtag real world skills. Our kids at Tri-Tech, that's real world skills. And real world skills are, I need to go to my job, and school is our job when we're students, and we need to do the work. And so if Mike has a truck driver that doesn't drive safely or doesn't drive, that person may not have that job very long. And so for our students, I want them to learn those real world skills. So I want them to be taught that everything everybody else has said is right. We don't always come from the same place. We're not able to do the same thing. And no matter how much we're given, some of us will be able to do more and some of us will not. But that we need to commit to do the work that we are able to do. That's our responsibility. And I think that's lacking.
I would like to put in that work determines success. And I would like to put in that all students have the same, I would like to use the word divine potential, but I assume there's going to be a lack for that. But they all seem to have the same divine potential and that work determines success.
How about if we just say all have potential?
The same potential?
Not the same potential. We all have potential, whatever, wherever I.
Our vision, our vision statement is something about how the students all reach their highest potential.
Right.
Yeah, and I guess the reason why I say that is, what that means to me is that we are all created by God and that we're all children of God and that we all have the same divine potential. I know that that's not going to be a popular thought among some people, but that's what I truly believe. That regardless of skin color, of race, of economic status, we all have the same divine potential under God.
So if we're not talking in classrooms about religious beliefs or biases, personal biases, which we talked about at the beginning.
So perhaps there's something that's.
Something without that would, because we have many students who perhaps do not have a religious conviction, and I think then that includes them.
So students don't have the same potential?
No, I think they all have the same potential. I mean, they all have their own potential, right? We all can reach our potential with what the best that we're given. I don't know that we need to bring.
So if we're given less than we don't have the same potential?
I didn't say that. I said, I think we don't need to bring the divineness into that.
What you've said is that we all have our own potential dependent on what we're given.
I think we don't need to bring divineness into that. Amen. That's the end, okay?
Students can reach their highest potential.
Correct.
But not the same potential.
Everyone, some people will probably not succeed as much as others.
I agree with that.
And so that's just, that's, so our goal is to give them.
Not that they can't, but they won't.
Let me finish, please. We have a horrible habit of interrupting people in their speech. So, our job is to give them the opportunity to succeed and give them the tools they can to succeed in whatever that may be, to their highest potential. Whether it's a stockbroker on Wall Street, whether it's a truck driver, a mechanic, whatever that is, our job is to give them those tools to succeed to their highest potential.
Mike, I have a quick question. I respect what you're saying. That's your feeling. And you go on there. That's awesome. Do every kid have the potential to be Curry?
To be what?
Curry, the basketball player.
Stephen Curry?
Yeah. Does every kid have that potential?
Uh, no, they don't.
So I think that's the same with education. You're going to have, on an education level, you're going to have some that's going to be the valor victorious. You're going to have others that's going to, that are still achieved highly. And, you know, I'm ex-military, there's some going to be the admirals, while others just going to be something else at their highest potential. They're going to be the best farmer in the world. So I think that's what is being said. Everybody has potentials. Everybody has the potential to be a pioneer, but it may not be the same.
So, Kamai can, it's be the best you can be.
Yeah.
Whatever the best you are, be the best you can be. So that's different for all of us.
Yeah. I guess I wanted to say, despite our differences, and we know that, I think this is a great list. I think we sat down, we talked, we articulated, we discussed, and now I think we have a good list to work from. And oddly enough, I don't think it's that ours. I think we all want the same thing.
Absolutely. Mike, do you have any comments?
There's nothing on there that I would disagree with. Not one. So now, the bigger issue is, is how do we take this information and go forward? What do we do now that we have it? And that's an open-ended question. Because again, it's a, yes, Tracy, you have a thought? I would love to hear it.
What I would like to do is to take this list, and to Diane's point, not because there's anything, I don't think there's anything legal in here, but I'm, you know, the board's talked about resolution, and I know that like there was a resolution passed for some things when it's not a board policy decision. Like the previous resolution that you all did on COVID vaccine was to make a statement about that to the people who were the decision makers about the COVID vaccine, right? But you're the decision makers about curriculum as it pertains to kind of a school district. So I would like to talk with Bronson about, is this, to me, this seems more policy than resolution. Because, so, but, and I kind of want to check that with him from his perspective. And then I think the next step would be, whether it's a resolution or a policy or whatever, that I would take what you've said here, I would draft it up into some policy document or resolution document or whatever, after talking with Bronson, and then it would come back to you at a board meeting for conversation and decision.
And I do have a policy, I would encourage, maybe we can share that with the board and they can read it and we can add to it or something.
You have a policy?
No, we've drafted up a resolution. We've drafted up a resolution. And I think it might be a good thing for the board to just look at and then maybe add to this and maybe kind of take through it a little bit.
What I would suggest, though, if there's particular things in that resolution that didn't get talked about here, I mean, I think this is really the opportunity, I know it's late and maybe we come back to this or whatever, I just, is there anything on that that isn't addressed here?
I think this has some additional things that are good.
I'd say it's all additional because the stuff that I shared up there is directly from that document. So it could essentially add that. But you and Bronson have a copy of it, so you guys can look at it and work on it.
I'm sorry, Gabe. One thought, so, policy is going to have more teeth than a resolution, correct?
Yeah.
Well, that's what I want to kind of talk to Bronson about, like what is the, you know, as I think about it, like why would boards pass a resolution? I think you're passing a resolution if you're not the decision maker on something. You're sending a message to another group, to the legislature, whatever, that's making a decision. I don't think you would draft a resolution about your own decisions. So that's what it seems to me that it's more applicable to policy.
Yeah, so, and that's, okay, thank you. Because that's what I was wondering, because I think a policy is going to have more teeth than is going to say, look, this is, this is the rules of education at KST. This is what the expectations are. This is what we as a board have decided that you will go forward and do.
I like it.
Because I think that makes more sense.
I like what you said, Mike, yeah.
A resolution is advisory.
Yeah, resolution is like, hey, this is what we think, you know, and it's kind of, it's just a statement.
Doug.
We want to make rules.
Yeah, that's great. I like that. I think that's wonderful. And if a teacher is teaching or if the teacher signs a pledge to teach CRT, which is a direct, directly against.
I have a quick question. This is just for my education here. Why was your policy given to certain people and not the board?
Well, Gabe and I, Gabe, the resolution that we drew, Gabe and I worked on it and we gave it to, well, Gabe gave it to.
I believe Gabe sent it to Mike and to me.
Yeah.
And asked if this is something that the board can discuss. And Mike said this, and then it came, I don't know the exact thing, and then it was like, well, this isn't, we don't, like typically the process, kind of to your point, I think, earlier about time and that kind of thing, typically, you know, like, board members just wouldn't show up to a meeting with a resolution that the board hadn't discussed all of it and say, hey, can we pass this, right? That typically, it would be, hey, here's a topic, we think we should discuss this, right? And then, and so that's why, that's why. So then the topic became part of this discussion, part of this agenda here because process-wise, that's how the board does things.
Yeah, so when they came forward, we put it, Gabe wanted to talk about it, Mike wanted to talk about it, so we wanted to put it for the board to have a discussion. So that's why, that's why we went this route. So it was not a matter of trying to hide anything from anyone. It was a matter of, let's have the conversation first before we present a resolution.
And honestly, Ron, that's just probably not knowledge of the actual process. So whether it's, I mean, I wasn't sure, if we can just put a resolution on agenda item, review it, read it, decide or how that process works. So now, we know going forward, it's a discussion.
What I'm accustomed to is that I have an idea I would like to bring in for the board. Not the idea shared, because we should all get equal reading of the proposal. To me, I would love to do my homework on that so that at the meeting I can come in with pros or anti or against. But to me, I'm already coming in behind eight, but you're going to present it and possibly want some vote on it at the same night. And I'm just going to delay it if I don't, I'm not threatening now, but delay it if I don't understand it, I'm going to ask for more time for understanding.
So I think exactly to that point, we said, well, what we, what the procedure, right, would be, would be like, the topic gets discussed at a study session. So honestly, I mean, I know I have it, but what I'm going to take, and also I don't, like we just talked about, I don't even think a resolution's the right, you know, avenue. I think it's more policy. So what I plan to do, unless the board tells me otherwise, I plan to take this document that you all came up with and put it into some kind of draft policy language after confirming with Bronson that that would be the appropriate thing. And then that draft would come to the board.
Okay. Perfect. Okay, are we good?
I like that.
Wonderful. Okay, so moving on to our last one here. So, Ron, did you want to discuss some other theories?
I do, I do. I just want to share, this is more of a knowledge, a share of knowledge. People have contacted me saying, what are the theories? And I want to discuss it with my board here before I just throw it out in the public. But I wonder, you guys are so much smarter than I am, so you probably already noticed these things. There's a theory of deep state. Are you guys familiar with deep state theory?
Mm-hmm.
Deep state is the power elite controls the government. Is that something that should be taught in school? Just a question, hanging question out there. A theory, the theory that the Ukraine actually interfered in the election versus the communist Russia. That's a theory that's out there. Replacement theory. Changing the country via immigration, replacement of people. That's a theory that's out there. Should that be taught in our classrooms? Protocol of elders of Zion. Jewish people dominate the world and they plan to dominate the world even more so. That's a theory. That's a theory that's out there. Gun violence is black-on-black issue, therefore it doesn't really, let me see what it wrote. Gun violence is black-on-black issue, therefore it does not really matter to most Americans. That's a theory. That's a theory that's just hanging out there. Another theory. Young people are stupid for joining the military. That's a theory that's verbally been stated, is out there. Buffalo, and I'm so embarrassed that I say this word wrong, Uvain, the Texas murder, Uvalde, so I'm sorry, are false flags and that it's actually staged and the actual action was conducted by federal agents. That is a conspiracy theory that's out there.
Can we say that one again?
I'm sorry for saying it wrong. It said that mass shootings are false flags and actually staged by the federal agencies, the federal agents.
That was started long ago, but Marjorie Stoneman Douglas was the major one that there have been lawsuits against.
There's a Senator Rogers that states that. Mr. Alex Jones states that. Tucker Carson is credited for also stating that. Those theories, as ridiculous as they may sound, they exist. And so we need to cover those if we're going to talk about theories when we say we don't want that in our schools.
Well, am I good, Mike?
Please.
First, I would have loved to get these theories so I could have looked into some of these a little bit more because probably half these, I'm not really even sure the context to them. These are theories, though, taught in our schools?
No, they're theories that's out there that I don't want taught in our schools.
Okay. Yeah, I agree with Gabe. I mean, you wanted to hear the CRT stuff, but we wanted to hear this, you know?
Well, I think we go back to fact-based education is really what we're shooting for. Is that we have, you know, we want to make sure that what we're teaching stands scrutiny is, can be verified, double verified, we has, you know, there's going to be points of view on it. But we want to make sure that what we're teaching is factually correct to the best of our knowledge. Because again, as we know, as we move forward in life, you know, things become uncovered, but we need to look at things as we see them at the time to the best of our abilities.
And I want to add, you guys, I didn't tell you in advance, the purpose of me telling you these theories, well, not for you to go do research on them as if in disbelief. The purpose is to show you that our document that we come up with has to be broad enough to cover conspiracy theories, period. Because they're out there. It wasn't, Gabe, you can look them up. I'm not known to tell a lie, especially when the microphone is sitting in front of me. Look them up. But when you look them up, it's not for credence, it's to let you know that there are other conspiracy theories out there that we need to cover when we say we don't want conspiracy theories in our classroom. Or we're going to take, you could take it the opposite way to say, we don't want CRT, but the other ones are okay.
Are there examples of teachers teaching these?
No.
Okay.
There's no proof, there's nothing I'm saying is in the classroom, including CRT. We want to keep them out of the classroom is my effort. All conspiracy theories. Other than the education of kids to let them know that such thing exists, but not as a, you should. But not as a, you should believe this.
Indoctrination.
Right, exactly.
And that's an important word, indoctrination.
It is, I like it.
No, I, again, I, I don't know enough about these. You, you've got them written down, I'm going to, I'm going to take your word that these theories are out there and, um, you know, I'll, I'll, I, I understand what you're, you're talking about, so.
Still have executive session.
Yeah, I think they got exec session.
People are killing me.
Poor Mike. It says sixty, I believe.
It's not going to be sixty, I can tell you that. All right, so, uh, those are the topics here for our next, next meeting. Excuse me. Um, any thoughts or comments? Okay, I'm going to say we're going to go into executive session for thirty minutes. And if we need to extend, I will come back out and let you all know. All right?
Is it, is it, is it too late to say something about next meeting for consideration?
Yeah, go ahead.
Could we consider discussing our summer school program?
Ooh, good idea.
That's good Ron.
We will already have started summer.
I know it's too late now, but you can set it up, maybe even second quarter of summer. But summer school, summer school would be good.
Are you talking about summer school in total or any specific?
Total.
Okay.
The availability, um, I'll bring some, I like to talk about availability to kids. That some kids getting shut out of summer school because of numbers.
Okay.
Really?
It was, it could be corrected, I bet when my kids were in school, you know, that program is full. You got to try something.
It, that still happens sometimes.
Yeah.
Gabe, do you have something else? As, as will I, I will be, I hope I can get on, I'm going to be in the middle of nowhere, so.
So you, you both are?
Yeah, I will, yeah, I will be, I will be out of town for the next meeting.
Okay, so. Would you like to designate?
That's what I was just going to say.
Someone to run the meeting?
I'm going to let Ron do it.
Definitely, I got to check my calendar now, I just learned that we have three weddings to go to.
I'm enjoying it.
Or at least in an emergency if your wifi doesn't work, or your telephone call in, or your tin cans.
It's going to be a tin can.
I just want to say for the record that I also like Almond Joys, I don't know how I got out of this.
That's been Ron's thing for years.
It's been my thing for years.
Yeah, we're good, go, go, go.
Yeah.
I'll come back at ten, ten after ten. People are turning me into a vampire. I gotta nap this afternoon, that was awesome.
You got to prepare for this.
I was dying, still dying.